Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 21st, 2023 meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I please have a rule call?
Recording in progress.
Commissioner Divine.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Present.
Vice Chair Leal.
Present.
Commissioner Divine, would you mind leading us in the salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, democratic, and just as for all.
Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on this, on any agenda item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to comment or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in this meeting via Zoom. There is also a dial-in option for making public comment. The phone number is 669-900-6833. Once dialed in, enter conference number 811-5615-8241, and then press the pound key. Once the chair has announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone or the raised hand function in Zoom. This information is also on the screen. City staff will then identify you by your name or by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to speak. If dialing in, once identified for your turn, press star six to unmute yourself. Wait a few seconds and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel 26 or the livestream. Also, dial instructions, as I said, are shown on the screen, and I will call each speaker, whether in person or by dial-in for their public comment opportunity. And that takes us into administrative business. Are there any public comments on the administrative business?
Chair, no comments at this time.
Okay. In that case, I'd like to see if we can get a motion to approve the order of agenda. Someone, the lights are not working, so feel free to...
I go ahead and propose a motion to approve.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's vote, please.
That motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. We have no approval of minutes tonight, and I see no designation of liaison to City Council. Is that still the case, Director Murdock?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Okay, fabulous. And that brings us on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any item or any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I have no speaker cards, so if anyone wishes to speak, you're welcome to come up, or are there any callers or Zoom members?
Chair, we do have a hand raised. Samuel, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, and please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Samuel Casillas, 20-year resident of Pacifica. I'm here to question the wisdom of potentially moving forward with the quarry reclamation plan. Please understand that when all contaminated dirt comes to the landfill you potentially helped create, if you vote yes, it will be your legacy. The no-fill option is the only option. There is similar, there are similar projects in Pedro Point Headlands and Maury Point that would apply in the quarry. The applicant is not qualified to make an assessment of a restoration project. He is a principal of a toxic dirt hauling company, that's it, and it's formed by felons, including his own father. Their own truck driver stated he couldn't wait to get a landfill in the West Bay. And when all the lawsuits are done, and if it gets approved, I guarantee you that this LLC walks away with the $50 million and we get a dump site that is toxic and potentially a cleanup site as well. Because last I checked, if I want to get rid of something and I take it someplace and I have to pay to take it, it's called a dump. That's what we're talking about here. And if that's what you think about Pacifica, then by all means, you know, let's move forward with that, but I really, really caution, the only plan to do is the no-fill plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Sam. Are there any other raised hands?
Chair, there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Just a reminder to viewers that they can call in by phone for any item that is on or not on the agenda. So that will take us to consent items for which there are none, and then new public hearing. So the first item is file number 2018-021, Second Annual Review and Revisions to the Conditions of Approval Applicable to Use Permit UP-106-18, Authorizing Outdoor Seating at the Taco Bell Cantina Restaurant Located at 5200 Coast Highway. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Contract Planner Ranu Agarwal, presenting the report on this project. So we are here to present the report for the Second Annual Review, which was continued from the hearing on June 19, 2023, on the Taco Bell Cantina outdoor seating, which was initially approved with use permit UP-10618. The basis for annual review lies in Condition of Approval Number 19, which specified two consecutive annual reviews, the first of which occurred in 2020, and then the second one, we presented the report, staff presented the report, on June 19, 2023. Just as a background, at that time, at the, in 2023 June, staff in a site visit found that the facility was was noncompliant with four conditions of approval. It was compliant with 16. And the noncompliant conditions were Condition 1, which had to do with the seating capacity; Condition Number 6, which had to do with the type of exterior lighting; Condition Number 12, which had to do with maintaining an alarm gate and signage which identified as an alarmed emergency exit, the gate which leads from the outdoor seating area to the beach; Condition Number 20 was to provide accessible seating in accordance with local, state, and federal laws. So these were the four conditions of approval that the facility was found in noncompliance with. Subsequent to that, staff coordinated with the applicant and also the building and the Fire Department to work with the applicant to bring the facility into compliance with these four conditions. And on August 4th, 2023, and on July 6th, and I believe in June, there were two other site visits from Fire and Building Department, and the facility was found in compliance with those four conditions which they were not in compliance with. So I will not talk so much about Condition Number 6, Condition 12, and 20, because this was just bringing them back into compliance with conditions that are already in the books. With regard to Condition Number 1, which limited the seating to 38 seats maximum, the applicant initially presented a layout which the Fire Department found not compliant with the exiting area requirements. So they rearranged the seating, and the seating plan ultimately was modified from the originally approved. Therefore, Condition Number 1, Condition of Approval Number 1, staff recommends be modified to reflect that change. And modifications are as presented in this slide. The red lettering is what would be added to Condition of Approval Number 1 to include or incorporate the latest plan that has been reviewed and approved by both Building and Fire. Last hearing on this review, Planning Commission had expressed a desire to have another annual review and to have a total of three reviews for this facility because of the noncompliance issues. So Condition of Approval Number 19, staff recommends be modified to include three consecutive annual reviews, so there would be one remaining after this one. Then there is a new Condition of Approval, Condition of Approval Number 21, which specifies that the facility operator or applicant install and maintain a sign on the exterior specifying what the occupancy load is of that area, so that there is not the potential in the future of, you know, the seating exceeding what it is permitted for. And this is, if you see, they are showing the whole facility, but this is the seating in the outdoor area, which has been now modified, and this is the layout to not be more than 38. That concludes the staff presentation, except for a recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution and find the facility in substantial compliance with the modification to Condition of Approval 1 and 19, and the addition of Condition Number 21.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal.
Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have questions for staff? Okay, then let's move on. I really appreciate that the pictures were incorporated into the staff report. I thought this was really easy to follow, so thank you for that. I don't have any speaker cards, so anyone wishing to make a comment, now is the time to hit raise hand on Zoom or to dial, is it star six? Star nine to raise your hand.
Chair, there are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, then I will close public comment period and move on to deliberation or a motion. Commissioner Divine.
I propose a motion to approve substantial completion.
I believe there, so I would be happy to take a motion. Staff, do you need Commissioner Divine to read the motion in the agenda packet on page 11?
Yes, Chair, if possible, please.
Commission action, motion for approval.
I'm happy to read it, and if it comports with what motion you'd like to make, then you can just say so moved. So move to adopt the attached resolution to find the annual review of use permit UP-10618 in substantial compliance with applicable conditions of approval of Planning Commission Resolution Number 2018-004, and to modify Conditions of Approval 1 and 19 of Exhibit A of Planning Commission Resolution Number 2018-004, and to impose a new Condition of Approval on use permit UP-10618, and to find adoption of the resolution exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Sections 15301 Existing Facilities and 15061 Common Sense Exception of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA Guidelines related to operation of outdoor seating at Taco Bell Cantina at 5200 Coast Highway APN 022191190, and to incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Director Murdock.
Is that so moved? Commissioner Leal, or Vice Chair Leal, did you have a second?
I'll second.
Let's please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, and appreciate Taco Bell's quick resolution following our last hearing. Okay, moving on to consideration, Item 2, Objective Development Standards, Discussion Part 2. Staff, if we could please have staff report or whatever background you'd like to provide.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair. Planning Director Christian Murdock. We'll have Senior Planner Brianne Harcusha present the staff report in just a moment.
Good evening, members of the Commission. Brianne Harcusha, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, who will be giving the presentation this evening. Tonight's study session will be a continuation of the discussion of objective development standards for multifamily and mixed-use development as part of the Phase 1 rezoning program for the housing element update. On just a brief recap of the June 19th Planning Commission meeting, there was a study session held to discuss the housing element sites that require rezoning, and more specifically, potential objective development standards for 10 sites from the rezoning list. The discussion also included detailed design features for those sites, such as key corners, setbacks of third stories, and open space percentages. Additionally, the Planning Commission identified additional potential housing sites to be evaluated for potential inclusion in the housing element sites list. As discussed also on June 19th, the Phase 1 rezoning process includes rezoning of various sites with, and with that, staff will also develop policy document that provides objective development standards for multifamily and mixed-use development to ensure that the city can effectively implement these standards for proposed projects that may be submitted following the Phase 1 rezoning process. The Phase 2 rezoning process will follow Phase 1, and that Phase 2 process will extensively update the city's zoning regulations, including modernizing and improving efficiency within the, those regulations. In the staff report, staff has provided the Commission with objective design and development standards from the Sharp Park specific plan as they relate to multifamily and mixed-use development projects. And that's just to provide the Commission with some examples of types of potential design and development standards that may be created during that Phase 2 rezoning process. So for tonight's study session, staff recommends that the Planning Commission discuss and provide direction on these six core objective development standards to include in the Phase 1 rezoning that will guide developments until the Phase 2 rezoning process is completed. We have prepared slides of the remaining sites that require rezoning to provide the Commission an opportunity to discuss potential standards for the six core objective development standards. And as a reminder, the six core objective development standards again are height, parking, floor air ratio, lot coverage, setbacks, and open space per dwelling unit. And I'll pause here if Commission has any questions for staff.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I have one. Have we gotten any feedback from the state on the initial documents submitted that might guide this discussion a bit?
Yes, good evening again, Planning Director Christian Murdock. Yes, Commissioner Godwin, we have received a comment letter from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. It's the comment letter on the city's first draft submitted to the state. We received, I think it was a 14-page letter, so a lot of comments on various issues related to the draft housing element. However, none of them specific to the objective standards. For example, HCD does give some latitude, with the exception to that, I would say relates to off-street parking requirements. HCD is interested in the city reducing its off-street parking requirement, in particular for studio and one-bedroom housing units. But beyond that, I'm not recalling, you know, much specific feedback on particular objective standards at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. And just a reminder to everyone to speak into our microphone so that folks at home can hear us. So I just want to make sure, Ms. Harcusha, that I got those correctly. Height, parking, FAR, lot coverage, open space, and setbacks.
That's correct.
Okay, fabulous.
And we have a cheat sheet on each slide to help guide the discussion.
I remember this being easy last time, but I couldn't remember why, so that's definitely it. Okay, so since we, our goal is to discuss this, but also to get feedback from the public, and I don't see a lot of members of the public here, and I'm not sure how many folks are called in, how many sites are on the list?
I think there's currently 18 or 15. Yes, there are 16 sites on the list.
16? So if everyone is amenable, what I'd like to do is open public comment now, and then provide an extra minute of public comment if folks are called in and would like to after Site 9, and then again after Site 18. I don't know how much public comment will, how many folks are on the phone or on Zoom?
Chair, we have two members of the public in attendance this evening.
Okay, so I don't think that will take very long, so that's what I would like to do. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. So with that, I would like to open public comment. Again, I don't have any speaker cards on this, and then the instructions are on the screen, but if you're dialed in at home by phone, press star nine to raise your hand or press the raise hand button on Zoom.
Chair, we do have two raised hands at this time.
Okay, great.
Samuel, you should be unmuted.
Hi, can you guys hear me again?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Samuel Casillas. Although our city has struggled to find enough sites for the housing element because of our city politicians erroneously backed themselves into corner by accepting over 1,800 RENA number that we will never meet, there is one particular site that needs to be highly scrutinized to its impact on the overall economic well-being of Pacifica. The Seabowl Site Number 36 is particularly problematic. In order to accommodate 200-plus housing units here, it is being discussed that the Seabowl venue would have to be demolished and thus eliminated Pacifica's only family-friendly tax revenue generating venue. And mind you, I'm not making a nostalgic comment here, this is purely economic. Does this make sense to this committee? Remember that this site would need to be rezoned in order to allow housing, so the city can dictate to a developer that housing needs to be built around the Seabowl as well as the brewery restaurant, so that we can preserve some of our sales tax revenue base. That recent consultant-generated Economic Opportunity Study states that developing and continuing tax revenue generating entertainment businesses that are visitor-friendly and serving are critical to the city's survival. The report specifically mentioned bringing in a movie theater like the Alamo San Francisco, which by the way, Pacifica history would tell you that we demolished one and put up a Walgreens, and also modernizing the Seabowl. We need to honestly discuss what the impact of taking this venue out of our tax base is to put up more non-revenue generating housing that will only cost us more economic hardship as any well-executed cost-of-service study will point out. Note that the same Economic Opportunity Study makes a disingenuous analytical statement that housing is not a loss leader, it's a growth driver. To make housing a growth driver, we would actually need sales tax revenue generating venues. According to their own estimations, you would have to have a family making $125,000, needing to generate $20,000 per year or $2,000 per month on food, drinks, and entertainment in Pacifica. I don't even spend $500 a month here, so how is this number even going to be generated, especially when then you're taking away more venues to be able to spend our money? We have to go over the hill for entertainment, or down the coast. So I realize that economic sustainability is not a legal challenge to this housing element, but the fact that we will need a well-vetted EIR that considers traffic mitigation, wastewater treatment plant expansion, hazard areas, and drink and water availability are the issues that we'll have to take up if, you know, we're actually not looking at the true impact on this. All this housing will be infrastructure costs that we cannot afford as housing is the net revenue drain, especially when we are demolishing sales tax revenue generating businesses. This committee should be studying and recommending how to keep venues that generate tax revenue for the city and not eliminating them. The Seabowl Site is a prime example of whether we are thoughtful city leadership that is serious about building a sustainable economy or just acquiescing to real estate lobbying interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casillas. And there will be two more opportunities for public comment if you stick with us through the night.
Remy, you should be unmuted.
Hello?
Hi, Remy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so make sure that, and let me switch back to this screen. So I just wanted to kind of reemphasize what the previous speaker, you know, there is some issues with losing revenue generating. So, I mean, we have a lot of residential on the C2, C1, PD commercial sites, and all of those should be mixed-use multifamily development, where we actually maintain or actually increase the cost, the tax base, and, you know, build on the parking lots, and then everything should have ground floor retail, you know, with the residential above. The C3 sites, which is the visitor-serving, need to be additionally, you know, carefully considered, because that's where we get the highest transit occupancy tax revenue. So, you know, we need to make sure we don't lose those sites for residential. And the highest densities for residential should be on the Highway 1 bus route transit corridor, and all of the DIRs and FEIRs should consider, you know, carefully consider ridership improvements in the headways and frequencies of bus service, and then start maybe study privately funded BART shuttles if Sam Trans isn't step up to the plate on that. Additionally, all sites west of Highway 1 in the Coast Zone, we need to make sure that we're, you know, we're in sync with the Coastal Commission review, you know, planning reviews to make sure that those sites are actually buildable. HCD is actually going to look at that specifically very carefully on those sites. Site Number 26, which is the quarry, there's been identified on that site potential wetlands and red-legged frogs and garter snakes over there, and that was identified in the Highway 1 widening project, which we turned down. So I think that site probably needs to be taken off and replaced with, you know, you know, besides, you know, other sites in the shopping centers. All the public sites should be maximized for affordable housing, because there's no land cost to the developers in those sites. So we should not be giving those away for market rate, since that is public sites. And then same thing with the school sites as well, and Caltrans sites, and we need to make sure that the agencies are okay with putting housing on those sites. Traffic on Highway 1 is a huge problem, and we need to be studying worst-case scenarios and working with Caltrans, and looking at actually replacing those traffic signals with roundabouts. I think there's a city in Carmel, Indiana, which replaced almost all of their traffic lights in their city with roundabouts, and they had a 4-4 decrease in intersection collisions and fatalities, so that's, you know, reduction, you know, four times. And, you know, they also benefited by reduced maintenance on traffic lights. So that's something we really need to carefully study as part of this and the road safety plan. And lastly, we need to avoid hillsides and landsides and erosion and, you know, seaside areas, you know, that are subject to erosion and flooding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Remy, for your comments, and I'll remind you as well that we'll have two more opportunities for public comments if you're going to stick with us. Were there any more speakers or callers?
Chair, no more raised hands at this time.
Okay, I'm going to give it 10 more seconds, just in case. Okay, so with that, we'll close the first of the three public comment periods. And I have a couple of quick comments and a question for staff that came out of kind of the public comment, but I just wanted to kind of remind folks that the first tranche of sites, the first 10 that we started with, in I believe July, or was it June?
June.
June, were the sites in Appendix F, those were kind of more complicated. And I wanted to mention that a lot of the feedback that this commission gave, and again, this is just for study, there's no decision being made here, but a lot of the feedback that this commission gave was to have no net loss of commercial on key sites. And those sites included the Fairmont Shopping Center, other shopping centers throughout the city, and the Seabowl Site. So the commission had recommended looking at preserving the same square footage of the bowling alley building and restricting ground floor office and storage for the commercial uses. It had to be true visitor-serving commercial. So those were the, just a couple of updates for people who did not see the last meeting, and I'm sure we'll hear back from staff in a couple of months on kind of the resultant study. I did want to get a little bit of clarification. I know that Site 26 is labeled quarry, which is a little bit confusing, because I don't think it is the quarry, but can we get a little bit of input on if there are concerns about biological issues or things that we know already? if there are concerns about biological issues or things that we know already?
Of course, Chair. So, uh, we use the Quarry, uh, I think is just a, a landmark to help folks understand where in town it is. It's not, in fact, part of the privately-owned Quarry property that's subject of an ongoing processing of a Quarry reclamation plan, to set that straight for the record. Um, the site's currently Caltrans right-of-way. Um, if it were to be included in the housing element, it would first need to go through a decertification process with Caltrans to take it out of public right-of-way into a parcel status, uh, which could be conveyed to the city or to another eligible purchaser. Yes, the potential exists, as with very many sites in Pacifica, for California Red-legged Frog and San Francisco Garter Steak and potentially other plant and animal species, um, of importance and significance. That, uh, study of potential biological resources impacts will occur as part of the Environmental Impact Report that's being prepared for the rezoning process, um, in Phase One. Will it be down to a project-level, you know, full-site reconnaissance? Likely not, but it will include a study of likely species, uh, occurrence on the site as well as a limited, um, visual, uh, site evaluation of, uh, potential species that are observed at the site. There are other potential environmental resources, uh, as well, including tribal-cultural resources. We've heard public comment verbally and in writing about, um, concerns about the presence of those resources, and in, in fact, you know, the staff is aware of the potential presence of those resources as well. So those are, are two leading, uh, factors, uh, among, you know, all of the factors that we'll evaluate in the EIR.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Kuscha, that's one of the sites that we're discussing tonight?
Yes, that's correct. That's one of the sites.
Fantastic. Okay, so, um, with that, I believe I closed public comment, right?
I'm not sure, but it seems to be open through the end of the item anyways.
That's, that's true.
Because you'll be offering, uh, opportunities again.
Okay, so, um, oh, Commissioner Godwin, do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Um, my understanding is the Seabowl Bowling Alley is now closed. Now, that doesn't mean some other business couldn't come along and lease or buy that site, but at the moment, it's not an operating bow- bowling alley. Is, is that assumption correct?
That's correct, uh, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to make clear for anybody who might not be, understand, is the rezoning we're, we're discussing tonight just reduces the city barriers to building housing. It does not approve a project, it does not fund a project, it does not design a project, it does not do anything to get any actual project on any of these sites started, and in fact, a builder can come in and propose something quite different than what we would approve with lower density or higher density. It's, you know, this is just the big discussion about the rules the city is imposing or not imposing on these sites, not any forward progress toward actually turning any of these sites into housing. Is that, is that the correct view in your opinion?
That's correct, Commissioner Godwin. Uh, you put it well, that the housing element overall and the site's identification in particular is essentially determining places where housing could be built and where barriers are identified, taking steps in the housing element through programs and other actions to try to reduce or eliminate those barriers so that if someone does want to build housing there, if the property owner's interested in doing so, they have a clearer path to doing that. And for the housing element sites in particular, it's important because we have an obligation to plan in this housing element cycle for one-thousand-eight-hundred-ninety-two housing units plus, uh, uh, you know, a sizable buffer or margin, uh, above that. Uh, and so we need to make sure that we're identifying, you know, many potential sites in eliminating the barriers to achieve that relatively high, uh, number of housing units that we have to plan for. So, yes, this is one of, uh, many steps ahead for a potential housing project on any of these sites, uh, and it takes, you know, a willing property owner coming up with, uh, a project that would align with the housing element and other, uh, aspects of the general plan and zoning, and then, you know, the public process, environmental review, and so forth, um, as subsequent steps to ultimately get a project approval.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say.
Any other questions before we launch? All right, Ms. Kuscha.
Thank you, Chair Hauser. Um, so the first site that we have, um, so we're starting from the north end of the city and going south. The first site is the Caltrans Right-of-Way on Skyline Boulevard, Site Number Twenty-Five. The proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size is five acres, and the total units, um, proposed here is one-hundred-and-sixty-two.
And so, um, I can't quite remember who was at the last meeting, but we're going to be very, um, casual about this, so everyone can just jump in, no need to press the button. Um, and we'll try to make sure that we go through all of the six, um, uh, kind of key objective standards on the bottom right of each screen. So with that being said, uh, does anyone have any comments on height?
I have a question, if you don't mind. I'm looking, I'm unfamiliar with, um, try, I'm trying to visualize this, like, the width of this strip so I can understand setbacks and things like that. Does, does anyone have a good idea of the size of this and width?
Sure, I can, um, approximate that for you in just a moment.
Thank you so much.
Um, so the width is, is somewhere around two-hundred, two-hundred-plus feet.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The length makes it misleading.
It really does, it really does. Um... But it seems in terms of height that it's a generally unobtrusive area, especially with Skyline being that frontage road right there. Um, and this, um, landscaping, rather, along the ba- along the back end as well. And on the corner, on the, um, right on Hickey right there, it kind of looks like a, is that Sunset Ridge, Ridge School right there? Or no?
Uh, Sunset Ridge is a, a bit farther south and west of, um-
Okay.
...the image here, down Hickey. And to clarify, the two-hundred, two-hundred-plus feet is farthest to the north. It does narrow to about one-hundred-and-sixty feet towards the tail end of the, the area in question.
Okay.
And so we wish we could diagram it a little bit more specifically. This wasn't a site that had its own very detailed site-specific diagram. Uh, but it's a large parcel, we're really talking about the northernmost five acres. And what's unique about this parcel is the, the developed property just to the west, uh, the villages at Pacifica Apartment Complex. That's the site, uh, of an apartment complex where the city entered into an affordable housing regulatory agreement back in twenty-twenty, um, in partnership with the property owner, who converted it from a market-rate ha- apartment complex to a income-restricted, low-income, uh, apartment complex. They are very interested if the city can put the conditions in place to potentially acquire this property and develop, uh, an expansion of their existing property. So to whatever extent that might relate to setbacks or height or, you know, site considerations for the commission, that's a unique opportunity here. It wouldn't necessarily end up with that, uh, property owner acquiring it, but, um, you know, the potential exists, uh, to relate it to that apartment complex.
Well, I, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, in terms of height, I think this location is also, while it's not on the highest point of the ridge line, it's at the top of that ridge for the most part. So I think I'd like to keep it kind of in our, just our standard city, um, height limitations. And then, um, in terms of setbacks, I think, looking at the properties, at least on what I'm looking at right now, just east, those thing, what appear to be single-family homes that, there's not much setbacks in terms of the, at least the property line to thirty-five. I think similar setbacks along with those single-family homes would be appropriate.
How many acres is this?
Uh, five, total.
I mean, respectfully, Vice Chair, I actually disagree on the height. I think this is the appropriate place for more height. Um, I also think that if you go down to, um, Skyline and Sharp Park, where you see the, um, houses, and I'm not saying these are the right height, but when you see them kind of, um, up against the road, I think you have, um, like, a similar scenario for housing up against Skyline, and I wonder if that is like a somewhat appropriate setback from the local highway to emulate. But I actually think that it would be unobtrusive, and I also think that if we're going to keep restricting height, we're never going to hit the nineteen-hundred units. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I generally agree with that. I generally want to increase height. I'm just concerned about this location on the ridge. Um, but I guess in, depending on how the project would come, or if a project ever came and what that would look like, and the site lines that we would want to see, um, similar to other projects we've seen in the past, we can, um, deliberate that at that time, but, um, I, I understand your point.
I definitely see what you're saying. I, I don't know if there's a, no, we can't see them out because this is a slide. This is just north of the site with the water towers that are owned by the state and then, and CCWD, and I feel like that hill that's over there is the true ridge line, and then the grade really sinks down in this area. So this is one where I think, again, four stories or five stories even would be appropriate. Maybe four stories. Um... But I think kind of the more, the thing that I feel more strongly about is making sure that we have the appropriate setbacks.
Yeah, I guess I agree. I think a taller building here would be more appropriate, but given your, by a road that's fairly heavily utilized in Skyline Boulevard, I think the setbacks are almost a safety issue and need to be maintained, but, yeah, a five-story building wouldn't bother me here.
How does staff feel?
As an individual, yeah.
Yeah. How does staff feel about the setbacks that are at the southwest corner of Sharp Park and Skyline?
I think you're referring to the white building, that's like the apartment complex in City of San Bruno.
Yes.
Yeah, I haven't specifically studied that with that thought process in mind. To me, it's sort of the topography feels a little bit different there, like, maybe it's a little more leveled off, and you do have that big grade break, I think, to the east, um, that sort of opens up to the views of the bay and whatnot. Here, I'm not, I'm not sure if that same circumstance exists. I certainly haven't noticed it sort of coming up Hickey to Skyline. But if that's a, an example where you, you sort of think the, the feel of that seems appropriate, we can take note of that and, and see what those setbacks might be.
Yeah, I'm looking at it now on Google. It also looks like there's a road parallel to Skyline, so... I'm not sure if that's what we would want to do. Have we talked to Caltrans about whether they're going to reserve a butters rights or whether, whether they're going to be able to create a access point directly to, or whether we're going to have to access from the neighborhood to the west?
Uh, for this site?
For this site.
Uh, we haven't had a conversation about access, uh, with Caltrans.
Just a comment on access, I generally prefer for it to be off of Hickey, or I don't know what's to the south, but, um, especially in this location with just the fog and being on a highway, um, definitely, uh, have concerns around, even if there is a turn lane or whatnot, um, access off of, uh, thirty-five.
Okay. So, am I... I don't want to presume because I haven't heard your opinion on height, but I think we're-
I'm comfortable with four stories here.
Four stories over here.
Yeah, definitely comfortable here in this location.
I, I'd also add, in terms of lot coverage, gi- given that this is a, um, currently a public piece of property, if there's opportunity for, um, public open space or a park, um, around here, I know, like, Fairmont is, is not too far, uh, from this location, but that's another opportunity because you can, based on the property, there's a lot of green space already. If that was an opportunity, um, here.
I feel like Imperial Park is right there, too. I almost think it would be worth it to have like a green buffer, like a, to maintain like trees between Skyline and, and the buildings rather than creating a usable space, like a usable amenity space. I'm going to take a stab at a thirty-to-forty-foot setback off of Skyline with a goal of preserving as many of the mature trees as possible. It sounds like we're all okay on four to five stories. Does that setback sound good?
Definitely. If we could preserve as many of those trees, I think that'd be really positive.
Perfect. And then I think we could have a reduced setback on the west side, but with the step-back requirements that allow for a daylight plane, so that we're not intruding on the light for the single-family homeowners. Does that make sense?
As far as lot coverage goes, how are, how are you guys feeling about, I mean, as this narrows, as we, like, look at this and it narrows further south?
Yeah.
Um, maybe that's the opportunity for, you know, some usable open space. But I know we're trying to address less off-street parking. I'm thinking that's probably-
Well, this, this is a good point. I think that's, that's a great dovetail into talking about, um, what staff mentioned in the presentation about less parking for smaller units. What's the, was there a recommendation that you'd like us to discuss?
Uh, yeah, I would need a minute to pull it up, but I don't want to misquote that comment.
I'm sure the potential residents of this, um, development would appreciate that tree line as well for some noise reduction-
Yeah.
-along that frontage road.
Or also like a little kid running out close to Skyline, like, I think a big setback is a good safety measure.
Yeah.
So the paragraph in the comment letter related to, um, multifamily parking, it says, "The draft element notes that one-bedroom multifamily units are required to provide one-point-five spaces per unit, including one garage or carport space. Requiring smaller bedroom types, for example, one-bedroom units to provide one-and-a-half parking spaces is considered a constraint. Additionally, the element must analyze covered parking requirements for impacts on cost, supply, housing choices, affordability, and achieving maximum densities. The element must include a program committing to reducing parking requirements for smaller bedroom types, one space per one-bedroom unit." So a couple of things there, the ratio, um, reducing that from one-and-a-half to one for one-bedrooms and presumably studios, and then, uh, considering the ongoing relevance and impacts of covered parking requirements, garages and carports, for example. The comment didn't, as I interpret it, say that we cannot have that, but in sort of HCD speak, they're saying, "We'd really like that you don't, but you need to analyze it if you're going to keep that requirement." I think, in my perspective, uh, and opinion, it does add cost because it's an additional, uh, improvement, additional structure, whether it's a garage or a carport that needs to be constructed, and it does then pro- present certain constraints to site planning and building design if you have to provide covered parking versus an uncovered parking lot, for example. So those are the two components that we need to think more about, um, as we prepare objective standards.
While you're explaining that, I pulled up the state government code for the density bonus law, um, which is the state's idea of the amount of parking spaces per bedroom, and it says that for zero to one bedroom, which is, I think, what we're talking about, the requirement is one onsite parking space, and that's inclusive of guests, there's no additional guest parking. And, um, it doesn't say anything about covered or uncovered, so I think it could probably personally be either, but what do we think about using the state's definition for zero to one bedrooms, and then for two or more bedrooms, being consistent with Pacifica's municipal code currently? Does that sound fair?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Sounds something. Not quite enough to me.
Not quite?
Not quite? I think, I think the idea is that if we want to build affordable housing, I think with the, this is a county. What, what did you read, Christian or Mr. Murdock? Is it from the county?
The standard, the comment I read was from California Department of Housing and Community Development's comment letter on our first draft housing element.
Got it, okay.
There's a lot of transit options at this site, too, given its, its location. So, but that being said, there's, there's no off-street parking. Everything will have to be onsite, any parking provided where it's currently located. And also I think the other challenge is due to the narrow width of the parcel. Creating open, open uncovered parking may also be a challenge. But I'm okay with kind of following those standards.
Chair.
Commissioner Godwin, are you concerned that someone with, who's renting a studio or a one-bedroom would have more than one car?
Yes. And I guess I don't understand why you couldn't relax the height requirements and build the apartments on top of a parking structure and have the first layer or two parking. You know, it seems like on a narrow lot like this, that would make a lot of sense to me. Not that I've ever developed any apartments, but that was my first thought.
Well, I think we're saying that they could do that. You know, I think it's, we're saying it could be flexible.
Yeah.
And I, I have a feeling that anyone who is developing more than eight units in like in Pacifica could already use the state law that allows this. So I don't think being consistent with it is really going to burden us because I don't think anyone's going to build less than eight units on any of the housing element sites, the way we've designed them.
So I, I think state density bonus law kicks in at a lower unit number. I think it may be as low as six units if memory serves. There are criteria in terms of the proportion of units that need to be made affordable. But I think it's true that very many of the housing element sites are already set up to enable someone to qualify for state density bonus law. And, you know, in return for providing the required proportion of affordable units, state law provides that, you know, any number of local development standards like height, parking, et cetera, need to be relaxed or waived if necessary to increase the affordability or to reduce the cost of constructing the, the project. Commissioner Godwin, to your point, yes, in concept, certainly, you know, having parking structures incorporated with a lot of these projects would address off-street parking considerations. The main source of feedback that we get or type of feedback we get from developers, though, is that it's very expensive to construct those kinds of structured parking facilities. So it does adversely affect their ability, you know, to build projects at all in a lot of cases, just because it's so expensive in this area to build. But particularly for affordable housing, it's, it's an extreme challenge in many cases to build structured parking of that sort. So it's great if it could remain an option. And I think it is an option, for example, with a density bonus project because they can seek a waiver of, of height, for example. But they may in fact seek other waivers or concessions like eliminating parking requirements, you know, entirely or really pushing them down below what the code would require because that's more likely to reduce the cost of building the project, which directly translates to the affordability they can provide with the units. So it's, parking's a big challenge and it's a high cost, even though it's not often conceptualized that way for projects. However you slice it, you know, in terms of construction costs or utilization of expensive land area, it just eats up a lot of dollars, so to speak, you know, with a project.
Commissioner Devine, do you have an opinion on this?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess I would like some clarification, Director Murdock. If we create a development standard or recommendation on this site that we go, you know, four stories and that we use the state's, you know, one-to-one rather for these studio and one-bedrooms, there could be a developer that seeks flexibility in some of those areas that, and that would be potentially passable, if I'm understanding you correctly?
That's right. So the state has set up the law to say that if you provide this minimum proportion of affordable housing units, we're going to clear local zoning and other obstacles out of your way by allowing you to pick and choose which ones you don't want to apply any longer or to minimize the requirements of those standards so that you can more readily construct your project and construct it at a lower cost because you're not paying for what often, you know, are amenities that cost money, like providing parking or what have you. So yes, that's just the, the rules and that's the law in California. I think I mentioned at the last objective standards discussion, with that in mind and recognizing that a lot of these sites are likely to qualify, you know, don't overthink this process right now. This isn't going to prevent that from happening. So think of what you would optimally want or you think is appropriate, you know, within reason. Have a rational basis for it. And let's have that as sort of the outer bounds for projects that are not subject to density bonus to prevent a bad project from coming through. This phase one process, you know, it's kind of crude to say it, but this is a, you know, prevent a bad project from happening, not make a good project happen. That's the phase that we're in. Phase two is how do we get really good projects that we want with a lot more detailed, refined, objective development standards when we have more time to go through that thoughtful process? This is a, let's put a cap on it so it's not, you know, 100 feet tall. Let's require some minimum amount of parking and what is that? Let's come up with some minimum open space per unit type requirements so that we aren't left without any open space per unit, you know, where we can impose our standards. So it's maybe hard sort of instinctively to say, oh, we're going to do less than the best job. But that's unfortunately the reality of the situation and the timeline and the circumstances that we're in. So we're really trying to just get an outer envelope on what could come through the door between now and when we complete the phase two zoning process with, with more robust objective standards.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
Would it make sense then to say a person who wants to develop this parcel needs to propose eight or more units or something so that these rules apply as a simple way of saying, let's not deal with this and just say we only want projects with a minimum of eight units?
Well, that's potentially an approach. The issue is the developer has to invoke state density bonus law, which means they have particular obligations to provide affordable housing. You know, in most cases, they'll end up qualifying because of our BMR ordinance, our below-market rate zoning, which at eight or more units requires 15% affordable. And depending how they structure those units, it can almost de facto qualify them for state density bonus law. But they need to invoke it and some developers, you know, for various reasons don't. Among them, I think the public perception for some developers that they're, you know, skirting their obligations and not sort of taking public input, for example. So, you know, no one has invoked density bonus on a project we've brought before you, for example, for years and years and years. So there's a reason, you know, some of them aren't large enough. But otherwise, you know, there are, you know, different reasons. So it's not as simple as just saying, you know, you can't build fewer than eight units and therefore, you know, all zoning is off the table. And I don't know if the commission would want to do that entirely because it sort of sets up any type of project to come through. And I think you do want to provide a message to developers that this is the type of project we would have if we could control everything. And sort of that becomes a starting point for negotiations and discussion and working with developers, if you will. You know, I don't know a developer that I've dealt with in Pacifica that wants to build a bad project in their mind or a project that they know the community is going to reject automatically. They all come in wanting, I think, to hope that they can get, you know, that sort of community support for their project. And so, you know, if we can show them the way, at least with some basic development standards, I think that's a good thing, even if they won't all apply to all projects at the end of the day.
I also would note, though, Director Murdock, that none of the, you know, table four sites that require rezoning would allow for eight or less sites because of the size of the site and the density requirements.
That's right. So I think, you know, we are talking about projects with greater numbers of units. But that's not to say that, you know, all the developers are going to invoke state density bonus law. And so we should think like, okay, what should our zoning be in the perfect world where we can apply our zoning standards? And then allow developers to decide whether they're going to invoke state density bonus law and we'll deal with that, you know, as the, the circumstances, you know, materialize in that way.
So what, what I am proposing, and I know you were in the middle of a sentence, is that for zero to one bedroom, it's one onsite parking space with no guest parking. That's from the state law. And then from our municipal code, section nine dash four, two, eight, one, eight, that these are, I believe these are all multifamily. So that any two-bedroom or three-bedroom or four-bedroom or so-on unit would have to have two spaces and then one guest parking space for every four units. I don't know, I feel like that will work really nicely.
I agree. I think that this site is going to be a little, I mean, if I'm being completely honest, it's a little challenging in general just because of its shape. But it's in a better location than some of the other sites that we've reviewed in the previous meeting.
Yeah.
So I think for me, where I'm at with this is I, I would even be flexible enough to go to five stories here, thinking of the potential in a perfect world and an ideal world that we could afford an underground parking lot and create some open space for some of the children that are going to be living in this complex. Because clearly unless they're going to go over, I think, I mean, I'm like zooming out on a map. There's really not much, there's not, the, the closest open space is really, I mean, there's Geller Park. There's a Geller Park clubhouse, but you know, there's also a lot of cemetery space as well. So it'd be great if they didn't have to cross the frontage road or the highway to go outside and play. So I think I'm more concerned about like creating a decent, somewhat decent ratio where we could possibly put something like that.
So then I think, so height, we're all in agreement, four to five. I think we were all agreement on the 30 to 40-foot front setback. We should get back to the other setbacks. Are you okay moving forward? We don't need consensus, but I would love it. Okay. So parking, we're all, all good with kind of what was described. Floor area ratio for commercial would be zero, obviously. Am I understanding floor area ratio correctly? It's just for commercial, right?
Well, it can be applied for both. Traditionally in Pacifica, we haven't applied floor area ratio to residential projects.
I'm assuming because we're creating the envelope and we have the lot coverage as the next standards to discuss, I feel like that would define it enough.
I, I think so for now. I think, you know, we'd be venturing into new territory, which might be complicated. And we'd want to bring you some more examples if we were going to go in the direction of applying FAR to residential uses. But I think there are other tools that maybe are more readily understandable in most cases.
Commissioner Devine, you've, I feel like you're going to be the leader on lot coverage.
This is challenging. I'm like, look, I'm trying to get to that south end of this parcel. And I know this sound, this might sound a little too heavy. Please jump in here, but I'm thinking like the southern 25% of this. I mean, or even 15%. I, I'd say between, you know, 15, it's really difficult for me to, to judge this the way that it sits right now. But I'm guessing as the lot narrows, that's what we're going to be really looking at the bottom end now.
I mean, I, I was going to say 62% lot coverage. That's a big, I'm looking at this and thinking that.
I was at, we were, I'm flipping my numbers here. I was thinking like 20% like open space.
Got it.
So I apologize.
Okay, okay. I was like, this is a building.
No, 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 no.
Where are we going to put it?
I apologize.
Where does the, where does the southern end of this lot? Is it Timber Hill Street or is it north of that? Trying to, just, because you can't see it on the picture, right?
It's the water district tank site down, just south of Timber Hill.
South of.
Oh, wow.
So, so yeah, you got it.
So sorry, the lot ends at Timber Hill? Or just south of that or continues south, I mean?
The, the right of way sort of continues south.
Okay.
Of that, to the tank site, somewhat north of Glencore.
Oh, wow, okay.
So that's quite long. I'm like thinking about people walking, right? And like the likelihood of little ones making it that far. So obviously we're not talking about placement tonight. But I'm, I'm more than happy with, with your number, Chair. I think that's much more generous than I was thinking would be possible.
Does that, does that sound good to you, Commissioner Godwin, Vice Chair?
I, I think, yeah, getting kids to walk past the water tanks to go, go play is a non-starter. So have as much space you can give them, I think they're going to use. 20% works for me.
So I'm, I'm thinking 60% lot coverage. And then we would determine the amount of open space that would comport to kind of the 20% that Commissioner Devine's looking for. What do you think?
I'm thinking higher than 60.
Higher than 60?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Higher than 60% lot coverage.
Oh, wow.
You were saying 80, right? Was that, yeah.
Well, no, Commissioner Devine was saying 20% open space. So 80% could be non-open space. But lot coverage, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, pertains only to buildings. So things like roads are not incorporated into.
I see, okay.
That's how it's defined for most, most sites in our current zoning code.
Okay. So 60% for buildings alone and then you have, you know, parking spaces and roads.
Yeah, I would think even a pocket park kind of thing there that little kids could play in would.
60% works for me.
Great benefit, yeah.
So, so I'm hearing 60% lot coverage and I'm hearing that we really want to get into the open space, which is actually the next thing. And I think a pocket park, does anyone, do we want to? So let's, let's back off for a second.
Sure.
If we have 30 to 40-foot front setback, we've now limited our width of the site to 200 feet long. That's actually not that narrow. But at the bottom where it's like 160, that's 120 and that gets a little narrow. So I think the biggest question is what's the rear setback going to be from those homes and Pacifica Park Apartments? Because there's a road back behind Pacifica Park Apartments, I mean, I would say like 15 feet seems like, I don't think it needs to be that big on the back.
I agree.
And I actually, would I, I would extrapolate that to the south and north setbacks as well. So 15, 15, 15, and 40. Director Murdock, are we leaving you with too little land?
I, I would need to measure it out, but you know, I think it sounds overall reasonable at this point in time.
I'm, I'm fine with that. We can leave it there.
Okay. So 15-foot side and rear. I'm going to say 40 front and it could go down to 30 if you really need it. And then.
Does that include a sidewalk?
On 35?
I'm sorry?
On 35 or?
Yeah, somewhere.
I would think the only additional sidewalk would be on Hickey, completing that all the way up to the intersection. Currently there isn't one that goes all the way to the intersection, but they would need to put one in.
It would, it would be nice, I'm just going to put it out there, someone who's tried to run this area before, it would be nice to have a place to run and have a bicycle.
Well, so what I like about this lot is given that it goes so far south, it actually connects, basically goes down to King. So it can connect Hickey to King, which is another shopping center. And so there could be a green multipurpose trail along 35, which is off the highway, that could be basically extending from these two corridors in, in this area. So I kind of like, if we, like having that setback, that, that larger setback on the east side, then that turns into a potentially a kind of multipurpose trail.
Multi, so the 30 to 40-foot setback is a multipurpose trail and preservation of as many trees as possible.
The trees, mm-hmm. And then there's your open space, too, is what I'm thinking. So just have a park or just have a long trail.
Can we make note of those things? I know that they're not part of the six, but I think it's, since we're talking about it and it's natural. I know that they're not part of the six, but I think it's, since we're talking about it, and it's natural.
Well, I think there are a lot of wonderful things that could be done on the site. I think I'm also recognizing it's likely to be a one-hundred percent affordable housing project, and is likely to be exempt, or have significant reductions to our Park and Loufi contribution to construct some of these facilities. And so, you know, aspirational is good, you know, we'll take note of it. But how you write those into a particular site's zoning, especially an affordable housing site, I don't have the answer to that right now.
Okay. So that leaves us with open space per dwelling unit.
I think we've gotta go pretty small here, considering what we've already done, no?
Well, so I feel like that's totally fair, but if we wanna have like a pocket park or something like that, that could be common open space. So we could have like very small amount of private per home open space required, but a bigger common open space requirement to get the amenities that you guys are looking for.
That's much more amenable to me personally, on this specific site.
And I'll just add, Chair Hauser, one, one idea is to use the Sharp Park Specific Plan Objective Standards as a touchstone. The Commission spent a lot of time thinking about what those objective standards would be. And so they might be a handy way to sort of start for consideration of some of these. Granted, you know, the Sharp Park, West Sharp Park neighborhood, you know, is very different than a site like this, that's, you know, multiple acres and completely undeveloped right now. But for instance, that might serve as a floor for this particular site. The Sharp Park Specific Plan for mixed-use projects was calling for one hundred square feet per unit, and minimum usable private open space for high-density residential projects of three hundred square feet per unit.
Required three hundred square feet per unit in Sharp Park? Seems like a lot. So I think that using the Sharp Park Specific Plan Design Guidelines for all of the more, for all of the pretty things that we're not gonna get to, I think that's a really thoughtful and good idea. And I would definitely agree with that. Think on a site like this, I would say like somewhere in the realm of a hundred and fifty to two hundred square feet per home of common open space. Which gets you to like between half and two-thirds of an acre of open space.
I was thinking one hundred, but we can go with one fifty.
Go with one fifty?
Yeah, I'm not an expert at this. What do you guys think is probably a good guideline?
I think, I mean, I think, I was, excuse me, let me rewind. I was going to go in the direction of the Vice Chair as well, with a hundred, but I think a hundred and fifty would be great, we could pull it off.
Okay.
That gets you to about a half an acre, which is a pretty good chunk for an urbanized area, you know, associated with the housing project.
In, in one of the attachments, there is language in there where like up to fifty percent of that could be used, could be included in the common open space. What do we think about adding that language here?
I was thinking of making it all common, and not having a private open space.
So up to a hundred percent could be common?
Or just a hundred, a hundred com, a hundred percent should be common.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Or at least, if we say up to, it could be flexible, if they wanna provide private and, or, if they wanna provide private, they could.
But then I think, I mean, so look, I'm amenable to that, cuz my thing was the setback. But what I'm hearing from Commissioner Godwin and Commissioner Devine is that they want a pocket park. And I don't think you're gonna get it if you, if you position it as not being common. So it's, I'm agnostic, but it's really what everyone wants.
I could be flexible on that. I mean, if we're getting towards half of an acre of open space, you know, I can be flexible on the, you know, the pocket park and whatnot.
But, but you're only getting the half acre of open space if you're requiring that it be common.
Right.
And the trade-off, certainly there, I think it's underst, it's easy to understand the value of the common open space, if it's aggregated into a park, for example, at the development. The other component, though, the private open space is like a balcony or a courtyard, which also has sort of a different utilization, and it's also valuable. So it may not be, you know, that you have to do all one or all the other. But there is, they're sort of, they, they perform different functions for the residents of the development. Maybe in the interest of getting a greater common area, you're willing to cut down that, you know, hundred or a hundred fifty per unit to, you know, fifty square feet per unit or something for, for private, so that more, you know, site area and resources can go to that common open space area.
What if we did, I don't wanna like...
Is it like almost flipping the equation, where like, instead of saying up to fifty percent can be common, up to fifty percent can be private? And so, it's, there's guaranteed common open space, and the project could include private if so desired.
Okay, so if, if we do that, my position is we should go to two hundred square feet?
I agree. We should actually bump it, yeah.
So two hundred square feet, open space, and up to fifty percent can be private? Does that work for you, Commissioner Devine?
Yes, definitely.
Commissioner Godwin?
I'm relying on you guys' expertise.
You're done. All right, one down, fifteen to go.
Just one, just one point, I can't let this one go, is that, that, that could result in no private open space. So if that's acceptable to the Commission as drafted, that is one potential outcome.
It is to me.
What if we said that fifty square feet has to be private? And a hundred and...
So twenty-five percent required private, up to fifty percent.
Up to fifty percent could be, with a minimum six-foot dimension. That's very common.
I, I think that works.
Okay. Are you, are you clear? I'm not, I've kinda, I've like confused myself with my notes. Okay, next, is, any questions on twenty-five? Staff?
No.
No. Okay, next site, please. We'll get faster as we go through.
The next site is Skyline Water Tank, Site G. The proposed density after rezoning is thirty dwelling units per acre. The area assumed for housing is one-point-seven acres, and the total units is forty-two. You'll see the polygon with the area assumed for housing in the darker shade of blue.
So this is right across the way from what we just looked at, right?
This is at the southern tip, so that angle on the right side of the, the top of the graphic, to the right of the tank, that's the bottom of the parcel, to your question, Vice Chair Leal.
Roughly how, between the polygon and thirty-five, I guess, the, between the two blue lines, eastern portion of the site, what's, like, how many feet is that? I'm just wondering if it's already our existing setback, and we don't have to, or we can just specify what that is. It looks like a decent setback, I'm just wondering how.
It also looks like it's mostly the flat part of the water tank site, which is good.
Yeah, we don't have a specific dimension, but measuring it out, it looks like it's somewhere between fifty and sixty feet.
This is owned by the state, right? And this was one we added at the last meeting to just a study site?
That's correct. My recollection is that it's owned by the state. I will double-check that right now. That's right, State of California.
What site number is this, please?
G. It's Site G.
I'm looking on the list here.
So...
Okay, got it.
Do I just jump into height?
Well, because it's literally like a hundred feet or less from the other one, I'm almost tempted to say we do the exact same development standards on this one.
Do the setbacks work?
Well, I think we take the setbacks from the turquoise line and not the dark blue line to be consistent, to help form that dark blue polyline. I think you'd end up with a little more space. And maybe we say no building on the slo, on the hill. I can't tell if any of the hills in the parcel or not, but...
So I believe one approach the Commission took at the last meeting, in some instances, where the sub-area within the broader parcel, you know, appeared adequate. I don't believe an additional setback was specified. And I don't believe the Commission went back and sort of constructed the setback from the broader parcel. So we can take whatever approach the Commission would like to take tonight. But you need not necessarily sort of delve into setbacks, if you're comfortable with the diagramming of the parcel from a setback perspective.
I mean, I, I think personally, this is a corridor. And in my opinion, there should be some consistency with the frontages in that corridor, like a unifying theme. And so I would say maybe just for this one, we're taking it from Site twenty-five, rather than from the, the blue line. I don't know.
I would agree, cuz I think there's, seeing these lots, there might be some opportunity for that, that lot to the north that we just talked about, to even build south of Timber Hill, which would even support that, that idea even more. So I would agree with that.
I'm happy with that.
Commissioner Godwin? See, I told you we'd go faster. So, just to reiterate, it's the same development standards as Site twenty-five, with the nuance that we're taking the setback from the cyan line, rather than the blue line, and that we're requesting that no, the north setback would be the base of the hill. Any questions for us, staff?
I guess I got one. I understand that the Water District appeal was held a few days ago. Does that have any impact on this?
None that I can think of, Commissioner Godwin.
This is a site owned by NCCWD?
I don't have any information that they own the property. It appears to be State of California, according to the county assessor's records. The tank sites themselves, one of them is owned by the City of Daly City, and one by the North Coast County Water District. But this particular parcel does not appear to be owned by either of those agencies. The one question I have relates to the usable open space. Certainly, the other parcel was much larger and had, I think, more area to accommodate that type of project feature. Disarguably, particularly the sub-area identified is, is more constrained. And so I don't know if the Commission wants to think of a different usable open space and private open space.
I, I would posit that the open space, the common open space requirement could be included in the non-subarea. Am I messing up? I'm messing up the way we did this last time, or it's like not consistent?
Well, this is, it's a unique site with, you know, perhaps a unique approach is warranted. You know, we've thought primarily about where housing could be constructed and would be appropriate on the site. The only other constraint that's immediately identifiable is the access road for the water tanks. And so if we're talking about areas outside of that, then perhaps, you know, usable open space could be provided beyond the diagrammed boundary.
Regarding that access road, there would be some sort of, I assume, right-of-way agreement to continue to have that?
I would assume that there's an easement there, granted by the state to the Water District and the City of Daly City, to access their reservoir facilities.
Yeah.
But I haven't done the site-specific research to confirm that.
Yeah. And potentially, that could be the same access road for the housing, too.
In, in theory, typically, you know, easement holders of those types of easements are protective, and they wouldn't want some other use occupying their easement that could obstruct, you know, emergency access to a tank site, for example. So I would not expect that the easement holders would consent to that, more than likely. But, you know, an attempt could be made to, you know, leave the most amount of area for other uses.
So we're, we're saying that housing can only be built in the blue subarea, is that, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I, I see what you're saying.
Now, whether the fundamental site assumptions are correct, you know, the Commission can give us feedback on that. We sought to balance, you know, the constraints on the site, you know, access to the Water District, topography, et cetera, with trying to maximize potential development area. If you think there's another way to squeeze more area out of this, or to change the configuration, please let us know.
Well, I also think the lot coverage could probably go up, because there's so much of the parcel that's left out of the dark blue polyline. I don't know. I, I would be, based on what you're saying, I would be open to going to seventy percent lot coverage, and lowering the open space to be a hundred square feet of just private, as long as the remainder parcel is left free of buildings.
Are you referring to the seventy percent of the darker blue?
The dark blue only.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying if we're constraining housing to only be on the dark blue, which is I think what Director Murdock was saying about the open space. Like, if so much open space is already left, then we probably don't need another common open space in this one-point-seven acres.
I was thinking we'd even go higher than seventy percent, in terms of, if we're just talking about the dark blue one, like, pretty high, almost close to a hundred percent.
Oh, because it could be a podium, this could be a podium development, it could be a single building, or like a wrap building.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be, I would be open to that. What do you think?
Up to.
I think that works on this site because of all of the open space outside of the blue lines.
Okay.
One, one thing related to the open space, though, you know, the circumstances under which this site could be, you know, rendered suitable for housing, you know, after coordinating with the state, that's sort of one aspect, right? We would do all that we can to get the dark blue diagrammed area. I wouldn't assume immediately that we would have rights to allow, you know, occupants of that development to go throughout the site for open space purposes, without securing legal rights to do that. And so, you know, it may be that only the private space gets constructed into the development with a high lot coverage, and without, you know, assurance that we get rights to the remainder of the site.
It's a really good point, because I can already assume that this easement road is going to be a particular issue on this site, simply because of access to utilities and the rights that they, they hold already.
But I think if the state is, I mean, it's a state site, and we're building this much housing because of the state.
Right.
Like, I feel like they would wanna facilitate it, so maybe not giving access over the whole road, but maybe allowing a T off of a portion from the access that's already off of Skyline.
So again, without doing the site-specific research, sometimes these access easements are exclusive easements, so only the named parties have rights to them. Sometimes they're non-exclusive easements, and so, you know, multiple parties have rights to access. It's possible the state, you know, has granted non-exclusive easements, and could grant another non-exclusive easement for use of this development. We just don't know, and I don't know that we need to drill down specifically into access design.
I think this will get solved, because Caltrans is owned by the state, the housing requirement is from the state, and the site is owned by the state. So I feel like if they're gonna make this work, they'll figure it out.
One would hope. But for now, you know, we have the six key objective standards to think about, you know, as it relates to access, arguably parking maybe is the closest related factor.
So I, I think we're saying that we would take the other, the other development standards that we did from the last one, except that we'd be willing to go up to, I don't know, like ninety percent lot coverage, which would allow for a podium.
I'm thinking lot cover, I don't know if this makes sense to, we don't have the numbers, at least what we're looking at here, in terms of the entire, the light blue outline, what that, what that acreage is. But I'm almost, I almost wanna say it's one-point-seven-one acres for that entire lot in terms of lot coverage, not just the, the parcel. So that does give flexibility in terms of... in terms of lot coverage, not just the the parcel. So that does give flexibility in terms of, while here's an idea of where it could be built and where the lot could be covered, there's flexibility for the development up to 1.71 acres.
I, just because this site was one of the ones that I added in the last go around, it's a 6.69 acre total site. So of the 6.69, it looks like 1.71 is what we're proposing. Although I'm looking at the polyline and I think the state's lot goes further north, but. I don't know. So where do you?
I guess my only feedback is that I'm thinking of the area, if we keep the same area that's in the smaller polygon, or, yeah. And just apply that to the whole site in terms of lot coverage, as a percentage or as a specific acreage.
So you're saying 100% of the blue line lot coverage?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's simple for planning purposes. I like that.
Staff amenable to that?
I just want to be clear with the commission's direction. So in alignment with what we've done for other sites that have diagrammed sub areas, the housing element site, as it were, would just be the diagrammed area. So Vice Chair Leal, are you talking about allowing 100% lot coverage within the diagrammed area? I understand what you're saying about allow up to 1.7 acres across the site. But, you know, unless we take a different approach with this, maybe remove the diagrammed area and just set 1.7 over total area as a percentage of lot coverage, I do think you should be more specific and think about the sub area effectively as the parcel, even though for setback purposes, you know, we're looking beyond that in this instance to create consistency with the the previous site.
Yeah. Yep. And with that option, if it's 100%, they clearly need to have probably housing over garages and driveways around the entire building to access housing.
You know, the site does have interesting topography where one could imagine, you know, maybe 30 or 40% of the site being covered, but having a much taller building. So, you know, with the tanks there, you know, those are unprominent topography. I don't think you're going to worry about blocking any views or sort of being out of scale, in my opinion, anyway. So just a thought. And that could open up options for for parking. It may be resulted in a lower lot coverage.
Sorry, I'm losing the thread here. I, what I thought we were saying is the dark blue sub area, which is 1.71 acres, could have 100% lot coverage. So if there was a wrap style building or podium style building, it could cover 100% of the lot.
It could. And I was suggesting, I wouldn't suppose that that's the only design that would work here, given the ability to perhaps have a taller building that's not out of scale, given the topography and the presence of the tanks on the high ground there. So.
How tall are the tanks?
I don't have that data. I just know that.
Yeah, I don't have it either. But my recollection from driving past there is they're 50, 60 feet tall. So.
And they're elevated, yeah, well above, you know, the roadway.
Yeah, it seemed to me that you could build housing roughly up to the height of the tanks in this without really impacting the views on the site.
And this is, lot coverage, this is up to.
That's right. I was just suggesting, you know, a lot of the discussions, like maximize coverage, tuck under the parking, you know, that's, that's one type of product. There could be another one where a taller building with, you know, surface parking elsewhere on the site, where it's not tucked under, could work as well, if the commission wanted to give some flexibility on maximum height here. I think currently, we're talking about four to five stories, consistent with the previous site, but if there's.
Oh, you're saying more than five stories here?
I'm just saying that this is a site where maybe more height could be accommodated, given it already has significant topography and, you know, large tanks above.
Yeah, I'm just saying if the tanks are 60 feet tall, what's wrong with building a 60-foot building that's about the same height, given it's already, the sightlines impacted?
Well, so a five-story building, which is what we're allowing for, is going to be around 60 feet tall.
Yeah.
So I think, I think we're all.
We're all saying the same thing, different words.
In different ways, right? So we're, we're happy with four to five stories. I would not go more than five stories. And I think that the lot coverage that we're talking about, all these numbers that we're talking about, for, well, I think just for lot coverage, it's up to. And then everything else is a minimum, right? Minimum open space, minimum parking. But these are also minimum densities that we're prescribing. And I think as you're looking at this, I think we need to have some level of density range to give a little bit of flexibility to folks. But I think it needs to be really clear what the bottom is and what the top is. That's more of a general comment for all the sites. Because I don't think anyone's going to come in and build exactly 30 or exactly 60, right? But maybe 50 to 60, or 30 to 40, or whatever it is.
Right. And that's in part the reason to have a healthy buffer, particularly for the lower income level units, should someone come in and build fewer units than was projected in the general plan, in the housing element, that we wouldn't have to do no net loss rezonings, you know, on a project by project basis, trying to avoid that.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is we're going to have the same setbacks as site 25B, with very clear that no building will be on the hill up to the Water District, up to the water tanks. That we're allowing up to 100% lot coverage of solely the sub area, not leaking into any of the cyan area. That we are going to get rid of the 200 square foot of open space per unit and go down to 100 square feet of private open space per unit, and that the parking is the same. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Let's keep going.
Chair, just out of an abundance of caution, I don't know if we want to take a brief recess, given Commissioner Godwin has stepped away in relation to a quorum of the commission.
Sure, let's. Well, I'm okay waiting a minute and seeing if he comes back. I don't think going, going through only two of the 16 sites, I don't think we really want to take a recess yet. I'd like to get to the halfway point, take public comment, and then have a recess. Everyone's amenable.
That works.
But we can wait for Commissioner Godwin to come back, so we have our quorum.
Okay. And the next site is Ramala Plaza, parcel one, at 2480 Skyline Drive, and parcel two, at 681 Manor Road. You'll see the 681 Manor Road is in blue, and then the 2480 Skyline Drive is in orange outlined. These are sites B and C. The proposed density after rezoning is 30 dwellings per acre. The total parcel size for both of the sites is about one acre. And then total units would be 23.
So based on the proximity to Fairmont Shopping Center, and, you know, the commercial, it's accessible from this part of Pacifica and the small size of the site, I would be okay personally with this going to 100% residential. I know that we did a no net loss on a lot of the other sites. But this is one where I personally could see this being 100% residential, especially consistent with all of the multifamily and rental housing that seems to be surrounding it. I feel like it would be a very, like, it would be a thoughtful urban plan. I don't know how people feel about that.
I can get behind that, 100% residential.
I can live with that.
Vice Chair?
I struggle with that a little bit, actually, given its location on a major corridor. And I think some of the services this plaza offers, especially with the surrounding housing already. Like, there's cleaners, there's childcare, there's the corner store. I think having some, maybe we reduce the commercial. I don't know what the current percentages are, but if we were, I'm okay with, I would be okay with reducing it with the option that there's still some ability to provide services for the surrounding community. I get King Drive is fairly close, but lugging my laundry down there probably isn't the, isn't the easiest way. And I think also it means just to gain a king from this area isn't the most accessible, at least from a pedestrian standpoint. So I guess I'm, I'm okay reducing it, but I do see value in the services offered there for the surrounding communities.
I mean, for, like, I already kind of planted my flag, but it's so close to all of the Westboro commercial, and it's pretty close to Manor and Fairmont. It's just, I mean, if we are going to keep commercial, I would make it pretty small. Like.
A key corner or something like that?
Yeah, a key corner. Like, maybe no more than requiring 1,000 square feet of commercial. I mean, the site is 43,000 square feet. So if you're gonna, I think it's really hard to get to 30 dwelling units per acre.
Even at 23 units, what size building are we really, are we really looking at? I'm having a hard time, honestly, I'm having a harder time visualizing the smaller amounts than I am the bigger amounts for some of the other sites we've looked at.
So what, what do you envision here?
I see what you're saying about this small commercial corridor, specifically laundry, corner store, preschool. I am thinking that a key corner would probably be the most amenable in this situation. But if we're going to do a key corner, it's like, and it's 1,000 square feet, what can really go there? You know, like practically speaking, maybe a corner store? That's about it.
Like a small coffee shop, yeah.
You know, so.
I mean, I think we should allow commercial here, like, if they want to keep a preschool on the ground floor, that could be very cool with residential above or something like that. So I think we make it flexible. But I don't think that there's a minimum FAR here.
Yeah, I like, I actually like that idea. That'd be unique. That'd be very unique in this area.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I'm totally envisioning mixed use at this site.
So complete ground floor?
Doesn't have to be complete, commercial. But definitely, like, if they wanted to leverage the ground floor for some parking and commercial, that could be an option. But but yeah, definitely mixed use.
If we were to do that, how many stories up would we have to go in this size of a lot to reach the proposed units?
I mean, to get to 30 dwelling units an acre on a lot with this kind of configuration, small, because you don't have a lot of efficiency, you've got setbacks, you've got all sorts of things, you're probably already at four stories.
Okay.
So adding a commercial ground floor.
It looks like there's one building behind all of these that is maybe, what is that, three stories or four?
I think it's two stories. The one at.
The really tall one?
Oh, the really tall one. I don't know. I'm looking at the one on Manor. Are you, you're looking at the one north of it, the Skyline?
Exactly.
Let me look at that.
It's, it's like set right behind that little commercial corridor. I can't tell if it's three or four.
I think it's only two. It's just that it's up a hill.
Yeah. I think it's higher elevation.
Do you?
It's a couple stories, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's just higher in elevation.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the lots changes altitude.
Especially compared to 35.
So we're looking at four stories then, here, whether we're doing 1,000 square feet, right? Or multi, or multi-use, it's a four-story building.
And I think that works here because it goes down as you're going from west to east.
I see. Okay.
So the properties west of this one are still kind of, would be on a similar plane. And then east, there's not much, right? It's, it's 35 and then undeveloped land. So I think going higher than our city standard of 35 is definitely appropriate here.
So I'm hearing four stories. I could get behind that, everybody, four stories?
I think so.
Okay, so height limit, four story. Setbacks. I mean, here, you're not really losing a bunch of really big trees. And because it's at a signal, it's not the same sort of like fast-moving skyline that it is on site 25. So I might, I might say something that would be consistent, I'll come up with a number in a second, but consistent with the buildings to the south, where I'm seeing outbuildings that are pretty close to. Let me do a Google measure.
Yeah, I agree. Looking at those houses directly south, like, that'd be a good.
So maybe a, like a 20-foot setback, based on that little gray outbuilding two lots south.
Considering how small this area is, I think 20 feet is acceptable.
Yeah.
And which, which setback is the commission?
Skyline, a 20-foot skyline setback. And then again, I think being next to multifamily, you know, I think it really benefits from that and probably doesn't need a very large setback to the apartments north or west. I don't know. I'd say you could probably go down to 15 on all of those other frontages, except Manor, which we should discuss.
I agree with that. I mean, I'm happy with that. I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but Manor definitely needs to be a little more fleshed out.
So I think, as I'm trying to conceptualize the site, you know, figuring out what kind of building form and presence you want to establish on the site, you know, hearing a lot of public comment, not only tonight, but, you know, throughout a number of our planning processes about capturing revenue and, and, you know, bringing visitors in, you know, there's a role for that, to whatever extent commercial use remains here, you know, along Skyline, to try to ensure that folks know there are businesses and someplace to stop and spend their money. And also to make it convenient and walkable, hopefully for the surrounding residents. You know, I see Vice Chair Leal's point about the service and convenience factor for the surrounding residents to have proximity to some, you know, number of services there. But, you know, maybe putting that emphasis on the 2480 parcel closest to Skyline, thinking what the appropriate commercial setback is there, given it's not really a walkable corridor, given the topography, and maybe freeing up some interior space for, you know, an outdoor seating area for a small restaurant or a coffee shop, for example. You know, maybe one other kind of commercial use, if you're really looking to minimize it for whatever reason. And then maybe 681 could really maximize, you know, a residential-only kind of component there, use the, you know, more balanced geometry of the site and really just create sort of a core multifamily building there. Maybe all of the units go there potentially, and then maybe parking in a smaller retail building or something on 2480. But I think there's maybe a sort of two-part project here. One's the Skyline commercial component, and maybe one's the Manor sort of residential component. It's one, one approach.
Yeah, this, this site's so close to Fairmont Shopping Center, it's hard for me to see a retail operation wanting to locate here versus Fairmont. You know, it seems to me this would be a spot that could be converted all to housing, in my opinion, but.
I mean, I would, I would advocate straddling both of the, I mean, like, that was, that's my view, too. And so I would advocate kind of straddling those things where you're not disallowing commercial, you know, you're not rezoning to residential, but you're rezoning to mixed use. And we don't cap the amount of commercial that you can put here. I don't know. Vice Chair, does that comport with what your vision is?
Sorry, we don't cap or we don't state a minimum or both?
We, we don't state a minimum. So if someone wants to do 100% residential, especially an affordable project, because on a, like, an acre is kind of like the minimum affordable project size. because on a, like an acre is kind of like the minimum affordable project size, I feel like this could be a good one.
Yeah.
But they could also have a restaurant on the ground floor or laundry, you know, to your point.
Yeah, I, I'm not envisioning Target to go in here or any retail, but service-oriented businesses, definitely. Yeah, the ca, cash, uh, the check cashing place can probably move to another shop, but services such as like laundry shop or laundromats and, and food and other type businesses. I think leaving that option open for dislocation would be good.
So I, so I have a weird proposal in light of that. What if we said, I'm looking at, you know, the buildings west on Manor. So if we made the skyline setback the twenty feet that we discussed, which is pretty low for skyline, and then a, like a fifteen-foot or even ten-foot setback on the west and north property lines, but having, having a setback for residential that matches the two, um, the apartments to the west, so twenty feet for residential, or five feet for commercial. So that you could have a strong street wall and activate the pedestrian frontage if you are providing that mix of uses. That too, too weird.
And so five feet, uh, which frontage?
The Manor frontage. Yeah, the southern frontage. Does that float everyone's boat?
And are you imagining that's with the residential use on Manor, with the five-foot setback?
I'm saying that the twen, if it's residential only, that it would um, conform to the setback of the apartment buildings to the west, which is twenty feet from Manor Drive, assuming that the setback is taken from back of block, which is what it looks like. But if it's a ground floor commercial use, then we reduce that setback from twenty feet minimum to five feet minimum, to have that strong street wall.
It makes sense to remain congruent with six-six, or six-five-five, six-six-five, but those three buildings, right? Because that would look a little strange. And minimizing the commercial setback could get us some more square footage.
Yeah, and kind of incentivize someone to have some services.
To wanna be there, yeah.
And if you're doing a, like a, if you're doing a lower or very low, like if you're doing a mix of affordable units, you probably want some services there that would like, sorry, I keep. I don't know.
Right, the one observation, you know, again about the, the mixed use component is that Fairmont Shopping Center is over a mile away. And so, sure, by car, it's not particularly far, but for anybody that wants to walk, it's distant and there's no suitable pedestrian facilities along skyline to make that a safe walk. And so some degree of convenient services, whether it's a, a small, you know, convenience store or, you know, whatever else, a small place to grab food or what have you. I think there is probably some value to keeping a mixed use there for the neighborhood, not to mention the, the corridor on skyline. Oh, and I would just add to that, like, yeah, King Drive is also much closer than, than Fairmont, which is the, basically the next stoplight, right? And there's a shopping center there, but I'm ninety percent sure that's in Daly City. So if we remove commercial here and people start going to that shopping center, then those are also tax dollars leaving the city, right? So, yeah, just adding that hat on, given that there were some economic uh, comments earlier from the public.
I mean, I still think that we're, so I still am like, kind of on the side of where we, what we discussed before, which is like no min or max commercial FAR. Okay, so um, I think we still need parking, and I would vote to just do what we did in the last two. I think that's a pretty good standard for almost every project.
I'd agree on the residential, I guess, commercial on this one.
For, for commercial, I would say we maybe have staff recommend something at the next one.
Right, I mean, if, unless you're looking to, to sort of deviate from the existing commercial parking standards we have, we can just continue to model those. You know, I'm not aware, and HCD hasn't commented in our letter about commercial parking standards. So that could be a phase two, you know, in-depth discussion, unless there's something you, really unique about a particular site that we're talking about that does warrant a different commercial parking approach.
Well, the stuff I've read has said that most cities have an excessive amount of parking and the, and the trend now is to provide less in commercial space.
I would generally agree with that as well, as a general, how we approach commercial parking. I think, based on Christian's comment, this site, does that warrant that conversation here? I think, given it does have off-street parking, or street parking, um, off-site parking, and then there would be also site parking, I think, as we get into a phase two, I definitely want to bring up that point.
Did, did we, I'm having this like vague recollection that we covered this in the Sharp Park specific plan, where commercial and residential could have shared park, there were like all sorts of benefits to doing a mixed-use site, and I can't remember what the numbers were.
We'll see if we can pull those up quickly.
So maybe.
So, under mixed use, it says the sum of the requirements for individual uses, residential parking shall be made functionally separate from commercial parking. Shared parking arrangements are allowed at the discretion of the planning commission, such as when required to improve site design. So unfortunately, that's not an objective standard. The objective standard is the sum of the separate uses in that instance.
So that just comports to the Muni Code, which is like, kinda, okay.
Yeah, or in this case, you know, the Sharp Park specific plan, um, particular commercial parking requirements, which I would argue, you know, in most cases are better, they're, you know, modernized, they're recently considered. But there's nothing, you know, fatally flawed in most cases with our existing generic commercial parking standards.
So maybe staff, when we come back, can have a recommendation to either keep with the Muni Code or if there are opportunities for reductions, let us know. I'm concerned that if we go down the path of like looking at each commercial use now, we're never gonna get to site four.
Uh, well, just to, to quickly recap, from the Sharp Park specific plan, the commission took a long time, considering these details. For retail stores and service establishments, which is the vast majority of the types of commercial we're talking about in these mixed use cases, first two thousand square feet of gross leasable space exempted at the discretion of the planning director, such as when required to improve site design. So for relatively small sites, the parking can be waived if needed.
Is the parking dra, is the planning director allowed to have discretion anymore?
Well, the, the requirements imposed, it can be waived, so I would argue it's objective, but, you know, someone might argue differently. Retail, eating and drinking establishments, three parking spaces for each one thousand square feet of gross leasable area. And that's, I would say, far below the current municipal code requirement, so I think that's a good thing overall. The current parking requirements in the municipal code for eating establishments in particular are very burdensome. Uh, and so I think they run counter to a lot of site design principles, in my opinion. Personal services, two parking spaces for one thousand square feet of gross leasable space. And then it goes on for business services, uh, three per two, two thousand square feet.
So, so we did do this in the Sharp Park?
Correct.
Let's just, like, bring them, bring them forward. Do we wanna recommend that for all of the, well, I don't know, I don't wanna discuss the ten sites that we already kind of like put, uh, okay. Let's bring the commercial standards forward for this.
Again, this isn't the, you know, last parking standard you'll ever recommend to enact. This is to put something in place between now and the conclusion of phase two, when we can really drill down. And if you think this, you know, that you reflected on and dove into last year is better than something from the nineteen-sixties potentially in the standard code, then maybe this can be the default until you have a chance to revisit it.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we're down to open space for dwelling unit and lot coverage. And this one, I would be okay with like a seventy or eighty, like, percent to be able to hit the.
For lot coverage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That works.
Okay, which, any, any indication, like any feeling one way or another?
No.
Let's split the difference and say seventy-five, no, I'm just kidding.
Eighty.
Eighty, okay. Okay, and um.
My expertise.
Open space per dwelling unit?
For what it's worth, this seems like a denser infill kind of site that might be more aligned with what the Sharp Park specific plan, you know, would drive in terms of an outcome as a starting point.
Yeah. I'm just trying to see what we did for the Fairmont Shopping Center. I think we did a hundred and a hundred. Hundred private, hundred open, a hundred common.
I worry about the comment on this spot, I'd be able to accomplish that.
So why don't we do what we did for Site G and make it a hundred percent private open space per unit?
Of a hundred.
Of private?
One hundred, um.
Square feet?
Square feet.
Yeah. But being that we are a tree city, I think that there is another development standard. If we're gonna make the requirement so low and not be common, I think that we need to have a requirement for trees.
When you do a requirement for trees, do you mention placement, or is this just a ratio?
Well, let me, let me ask a different question. Do we have a, um, development standard currently in the municipal code for percent landscape area required? I thought we did, but now I can't quite remember.
Uh, we do, uh, typically for residential uses, it's twenty percent. And typically for commercial, it's de facto like ten percent, uh, based on the lot coverage standards.
So then let's do a lot coverage up to eighty percent, but a ten percent requirement for landscape space.
That sounds good.
I didn't capture the last part about the landscape space.
A lot coverage require, allowance of eighty percent, which was really high, but a ten percent minimum landscape space. Okay, so I think we just covered that. I'm gonna read back everything I have. And if I've got this wrong, or if we wanna change something, let me know. So up to four-story setbacks for twenty feet off of skyline, ten feet to the north and west, five feet commercial setback off of Manor, but if all a hundred percent residential, twenty feet setback off of Manor. This would be a mixed-use rezone with no minimum or maximum commercial FAR. Parking space is gonna be the same for the residential that we discussed for Sites twenty-five and G. The commercial would be the same as the Sharp Park specific plan. An eighty percent lot coverage, a ten percent minimum landscape area, and a hundred percent of private open space per unit with a six-foot minimum dimension. Staff, need any clarifications? Okay, number four, please.
And this is Water, three forty Waterford Street. This also includes the Waterford Car Wash. It's Site D and E. The proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size for both of the parcels highlighted is around half an acre. And the total number of units is sixteen.
I mean, just looking at this, I would feel like we could use the exact same standards, but with different setbacks here. Where we could have, it should be a mixed-use zoning designation, but it could be a hundred percent residential. Four stories, eighty percent lot coverage, same parking, same open space. It's a very small parcel. Does anyone feel?
Yeah, I'm leaning definitely more towards a hundred percent residential on this and marrying a lot of those same development standards, only because of how small it is. I wish there was one of those walkovers from the highway, so that they could access those commercial, commercial space right across the highway. But it's just such a small lot.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with you. The reason I'm a proponent of the flexibility on this one is because I feel like there was a developer that was interested, that was proposing a food use on the ground floor. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
You are, Chair Hauser. What was unique in that particular instance, however, is the applicant slash owner slash developer was in the, I think, the boba or other sort of ice cream drink kind of business. And so, uh, he was inclined to allow it, because I think it allowed him to open another location. You know, would other developers be similarly situated? It's hard to say.
Well, that, that's why I like the no minimum commercial required, but the allowance for it. And you're ha, you have to hit the minimum density anyway. I don't know, that's my feeling here. I don't wanna talk Pacifica out of a food use when we've had interest expressed.
Maybe making it optional, you know, is one way to go. Comparatively, there are close walkable services, you know, in this vicinity. So, you know, whether or not it has commercial maybe is less critical to some of the surrounding neighbors. And they're not currently, you know, benefiting from convenient, you know, retail services there that they would lose, like in the instance of the prior site. Yeah, I'm okay with, um, doing something similar to what we just talked about on the prior site.
I, I can live with it too, it just seems on such a small site, converting it to housing makes a lot more sense.
Right, and you may recall with the prior project, you know, accommodating off-street parking was really challenging. They were using parking stackers, and that had a whole additional range of considerations and potential complications. And so, um, you know, this is a constrained site, in the sense of the, the geometry and the size of it. So, you know, maybe being all residential could help with the site design.
Do you, do you remember what the, um, amount of units was on the past application?
I believe it was seven or eight.
So it's eight, just for the orange portion?
I believe that's correct. It was relatively small, certainly less than ten. Whether it was six, seven, or eight, I can't remember exactly.
Let me ask a question, and I'm, I'm not gonna die on my sword for this. Like, if we wanna disallow commercial here, that's fine. But if we had eight units on the orange with commercial, and then we put eight more units on the blue, which doesn't seem totally crazy, we would hit the sixteen units, that's the goal here. And we could get boba, which, you know, is pretty cool.
My only concern with commercial here is its location, right? The freeway on ramp, um, especially boba. But, uh, yeah, I, I think we leave the option open for commercial. If they don't wanna put in commercial, they don't have to. I think it also fits in better with this neighborhood. Granted, there are some commercial businesses on Waterford, but I think the general use of that neighborhood is more residential.
Commissioner Devine, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, anyone on setbacks?
I'm sorry, this is a real challenging one for me to envision. So where the orange line currently exists, it already is a little bit further setback than the rest of the homes on Monterey. Not quite actually, now that I'm looking at it a little bit better. Do you want to try to marry with those, with those? Would that be amenable? Okay.
Yeah, I'll just like reflect what's across the street for the Waterford setback and what's across the street for the Monterey, uh, what's across the street to the east for the Monterey setback. I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And then we'll let staff tell us what's a Steve setback from the on-ramp. And then we'll let staff tell us what's a Steve setback from the on-ramp.
I mean, in my perspective, it's an opportunity to, to really minimize the setback, to free up some usable area. You know, there's additional Caltrans right-of-way for the highway that provides a buffer from the highway itself. You're not gonna be impacting any neighbors, you know, directly in that area. So between setbacks and height, it might be an opportunity to minimize that back half of the, the property.
Okay, so, so, uh, like a zero lot line to the west?
Yes, I, I mean, I, I would be open to that, certainly.
There's a, I mean, there's a row of trees. I can't tell if that's trees or bushes or what, but, okay.
It's like some really scrubby Monterey cypress, I think.
Okay.
And like, yeah, I'm, I'm looking on Google Maps. It's not... It's mostly like low, like jade, or no, it's not jade, it's that stuff that grows by the coast with the purple flowers. It's really fleshy. I'm down for the zero and then matching what's across Waterford, on Monterey and Waterford.
I think that works for this site.
Okay. Okay.
What about height?
We're gonna match, uh, Ramala Plaza, except for the setbacks. Okay. Site five.
This is the Public Works Corp. Yard. Address is one five five and one five one Malaga Drive and one oh four Avalon Drive. It's told, uh, the site is number twenty. Proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size is point eight one acres, and the total number of units is fifty.
So considering the location of this parcel and the proposed amount of units, this is looking like a five-story situation.
Yeah.
Am I assuming that correctly, or is it looking like even more?
I would say at forty dwelling units per acre. I don't know. No, it's not looking like more.
Okay.
I don't think for any of the densities that are proposed in the, in the housing element that we need more than five stories.
Okay.
And I think that's also really helpful, since we studied five stories with the Sharp Park specific plan, so we'll have some development standards off the bat.
So those are residential homes on the, um, Avalon Drive side, correct?
I believe it backs up to a fire station and a church. And I think there's one single-family home. That's the one sixteen.
Okay. So one twenty is not residential home?
One twenty.
It is.
It is, okay. That makes sense.
This is another...
We might want, we might need to circle back to the site, Chair. Um, something's wrong, uh, in terms of the, the density and the number of units.
Okay.
So maybe let's come back to it.
Yeah, let's, uh, take an opportunity to double-check, um, the figures.
Okay. Is al, that's also one of our active fire stations, where the engines?
Uh, it is. It's not included in the housing element site, uh, but that area on the bottom right is, uh, Fire Station Seventy-One, I believe.
I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm thinking more for the noise factor. Okay, cool. Let's go to the next one.
The next site is seven five one Oceana Boulevard, um, APN zero zero nine two four five zero three zero. It's Site number two. Proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size is two point five acres, and the total number of units is eighty units.
And, um, the site that you see there shown is eight oh one. If you could just go to the next slide, please. It may help to think about the sites together, even though they're separate sites and separate ownership as it relates to the, the height, setbacks, site planning considerations, et cetera. So we'll go back to the other slide, but whenever you need to toggle, please just let us know.
Yeah. I mean, I think the key question here is, well, let me ask a question. Is this a hillside preservation site?
I, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. If I'm remembering the site correctly, the west property, or sorry, the east property line, which is next to the Connemara Homes, are really high up compared to where Oceana is. Because that little parking lot off of Moon Ray is where the, um, GG NRA parking lot is to get to Malaga Bridge Trail. I don't know.
Confirming it's not in the hillside preservation district.
Okay.
And, uh, you're correct, yes. The elevation is, uh, quite high, and so, you know, sizable building. I, I don't have the exact height, but certainly more than three stories can be accommodated there without even breaking the finished grade of the sites. So views wouldn't be impacted, you know, potentially with a four- or five-story building in that location.
So when I look at Pavilion of Flowers, I think that's a great developable site on a parking lot with kind of underutilized, like, a lot of it is surface parking lot. When I look at the big green area, that, that one's a little hard for me, and I don't know. I don't know if someone else wants to kick it off, but a bunch of trees on a hill. I mean, would it be possible to combine Site Two with, what's the next one? Site E? Site H? Is it possible to? I don't know. I'm looking at the goal, and I don't think it is.
So then it isn't practical to assume that we could combine the two sites?
Well, I think the complicating factor is the ownership.
I see. Okay. Got it.
Is, is it different ownership?
It is, and I'll just share that, um, you know, we've been approached by the owner of this site with interest, uh, for a particular development concept already. And so I think opportunities to try to align that with acquisition of Pavilion of Flowers, um, might be particularly challenging.
Was there a sense of what kind of product or density they were looking to provide?
Yes, and we thought very carefully about crafting this to accommodate the likely application. It isn't exactly this parcel configuration, so there's a little bit of flexibility, uh, in achieving it, but it's pretty close.
Well, I think if you're a homeowner off of the Connemara property and you bought a home with an ocean view adjacent to a parcel that was not zoned for residential, what's the current zoning on that piece of property?
The general plan's currently high-density residential.
Oh, it's already?
It just needs to go denser than that. It's part of the housing element rezoning.
So from, what is that, twenty-five to forty?
So high-density residential currently goes up to twenty-one units per acre for all sites and up to thirty for half acre or greater.
So this is going from thirty to forty, essentially?
Correct.
So this is gonna be a minimum, sorry, it's gonna be minimum forty dwelling units per acre as a housing element site?
Again, we haven't done the, the full detailing of what minimum densities would be specifically, but we would be able to accommodate these densities. My desire is to establish a, a pretty aggressive minimum density in a lot of these sites, so we don't have product, projects coming in way below, uh, what the desired density is. In a lot of cases, you know, the sort of highest and best use economically for the developer is single-family residential use, but that doesn't accommodate our, or achieve our housing-related goals, or, you know, some of our economic development-related goals that relate to housing density and greenhouse gas emissions and other kinds of land use planning goals.
And this, the site north of eight oh one, which I think was on the market for a long time, that's, what's that land use?
So that site's owned by the same owner as the site that we're talking about here. And that site is currently designated office-commercial.
Got it. Does anyone have an opinion?
Um, and just to confirm, the zoning is, appears to be C-two for this property.
And so there's a discrepancy, uh, in, in accordance with state, accordance with state law, uh, the general plan would prevail in the event of this inconsistency. And so, um, as we know, we didn't complete the typical comprehensive rezoning that would follow a general plan update. We had to sandwich this minor housing element process in between.
For best-fit zoning, already. It's already. Be, because of the general plan, it doesn't really matter what the zoning is. Someone would say, your zoning doesn't match your general plan. Give me best-fit zoning.
Correct.
I mean...
Chair, just go one by one, height, and start there?
Yeah.
Honestly, probably, yeah. We'll just do that.
Like, is it? I don't know. What I'm thinking is, is it possible to do certain portions, portion of the parcel, um, higher height than another one? Uh, so like, if we start at the south, and let's say the southern half of the, the site, goes up to four to five stories, and then it's thirty-five feet on the northern half?
Yeah, I might even go so far as to say it's four to five stories on the west property line, and when you get to the path that takes you up to Malaga Ridge, it's no more than two stories and a much bigger setback. So that you're kind of telescoping down, and you're not blocking the single-family homeowners that are living off of Connemara.
So the, the trade-off is that you get a taller height on one, on the western side, um, but you have to give up that thirty-five feet, fifteen feet on the eastern side?
This might be a site where you can maybe take an unconventional approach, which might allow us to sort of drill down on establishing the maximum heights, and maybe just say no greater than, you know, finished grade of Connemara, or finished grade minus five feet, or something relative like that, and then allow some flexibility in terms of, you know, overall height, um, when we drill down drafting the zoning standards. It's just a different approach that might work, unique to that planning sensitivity.
I would agree with that, like, five feet lower than the, than grade. I like that idea. It's a lot more flexible.
Or like the, the height of the highest point of the roof line, um, could, would be at the no higher than finished grade of the Connemara
Exactly.
development above. And then I would be a proponent of, like, at least twenty feet from that, I mean, at least twenty feet from that trail.
At least.
I mean, yeah, so whatever the building height is, like, the seam, the setback would be the same as the building height from that from the orange line.
My concern with the height is some, a person who owns it can go thirty-five feet right now. The person who owns it can go thirty-five feet right now and, and potentially obstruct views. I'm not intimate with this site and don't know what, what could happen. So I'm, I'm concerned with protecting views when we don't have a view ordinance, uh, and limiting the developer on the site. So that's, that's my concern with that, the ridgeline, uh, effect, um, without seeing it into practice, and what it would look like on the site and with a project. I'm, I'm a little hesitant in stating that here. Maybe it's just, you can go thirty-five feet, and that's the height limit. We don't increase the height for this site due to, um, I think, the shared concern here.
I can see where you're coming from with that. I think the struggle for me is that there is already so much confusion around the execution of these development standards and this plan, and there's already so much, um, so many feelings going around about this that, um, you know, although we may not have a view ordinance, we should try to take things like this into consideration as often as possible. That's just sort of where I struggle.
I, I agree with that, and I, I think what is bolstering that to me, like, it's not just a single-family home neighborhood or a residential neighborhood that's in existence. It's the fact that it's a public access to one of the resources that's like the, a key, like, magnet.
I think that trail's actually private, technically. It's on private land. I don't know, I don't know the, all the rules around that trail, but I do believe there's, um, it is property of the homeowners association.
The little parking lot that's up there?
Not that, the actual trail that we're talking about.
That goes down to, um, Oceana?
Mm-hmm. I think the parking lot is access to the public trails in the back, but...
But the trail that runs next to the retaining wall is not?
Yeah, now I know it's used for public access, but I do believe it's, um, it's assigned as it's, uh, owned by the HOA there. Because I believe that purple line, um, southeastern of the orange line is that, is, is some sort of property line that continues north as well.
Yeah, that space in between is, um, HOA property for the Connemara development. But whether or not there are public access rights to that trail, I'm, I'm not certain. I don't know the answer right now.
But I do agree that, uh, setback in the, that eastern, northeastern setback should be twenty or whatever we grew upon, um, away from that, because it is, at the end of the day, a trail. And I think, um, having a, uh, having a building up to that trail probably isn't the best direction.
Commissioner Godwin, do you have any opinion on the height right here, limitation?
Well, I don't think I know enough about this one, and, um, it doesn't sound clear enough that we ought to decide this one tonight. I think we ought to move on to the next parcel. It's my opinion, but...
Does staff have recommendations on this site?
It's a difficult site. Um, you know, interesting... It's a difficult site, you know, interesting shape, you know, proximity to the trail and the homes, I mean, all the issues that you've keyed in on, steep topography, you know, a potential project there might do a lot of grading, and actually bring down the finish grades, you could have a taller building, you know, without running afoul of height limits, or some of the key factors you've identified. You know, that grading comes with trade-offs as well, but it's a balance. I think it's a good site for housing, it's a generally walkable neighborhood, reasonably good transit access, as, whatever that means in Pacifica. And so, you know, I think there are, there's a lot to like about the site, but it's, it's not without, you know, constraints and challenges. Again, if you're not, forgive me, Commissioner Devine, if you're not sure sort of how to prescribe standards, you know, the next best thing for us is to hear, what are the key planning factors? And you've articulated some of those, blocking views for the Conomara residents, blocking views for trail users, you know, not crowding the trail users by ensuring at least a minimum setback from the trail. You know, if there are other key planning factors, that might allow us to craft some recommendations, you know, for the future.
I, I mean, I think that I would feel comfortable personally with a minimal setback from the west and south property lines, but a pretty generous setback from the east property line, I mean, like, thirty feet. And then like, the same parking for the residential that we talked about at the onset. I would require a lower lot coverage and higher open space per dwelling unit here, but I still can't figure out how I feel about the height.
Would we be able to put in something along the lines of, you know, the goal is not to encroach on any views and a, a way in which we might do that would be, you know, some sort of grade, like you were saying, like, you know, if your intention is to build to this many feet, then you need to grade to this extent. I mean, is that...
Yeah, and it's not, not commonly done, why I'm not sure exactly, probably because it takes a little more technical analysis, and it's maybe confusing to the public, but, you know, it is possible to sort of set a maximum, you know, above mean sea level type of height, for example, rather than a, from finished grade height, which is more typical. This is a place where maybe that makes sense, again, because of the concern about Conomara views, or views from the trail, or what have you. And, you know, giving that guidance, we can go back and say, okay, yeah, that's the best way to do it, or actually, you know, we can impose that, but in a different way. That, rather than sort of measuring from bottom up, measuring top-down provides some flexibility in this case, so maybe it's a unique instance where we find a way to make that work as a zoning height standard, for example. Keeping in mind the objectivity that we need, right? So, you know, saying subjective things like, don't block views, is different than saying, don't exceed X height, right?
Right, that's the challenge.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, if you're not sure where to go in terms of direction on the height, tell us what you're trying to accomplish. That's the next best thing, that allows us to be creative and try to bring something back if we can't think of an option for you tonight.
I mean, I really liked how Director Murdock explained it at the onset of having the height limit be the floor of the single-family homes, because then you can have that telescoping of height, where the taller buildings are at the bottom, which I think were, you had started, Vice Chair.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, I'm fully on board with it, I just want to make sure that not being intimate with this site, we're not also limiting certain parts of the site because of that standard. So, that's just my, my comment on that, I'd be in favor of it though, but, yeah, I just want to make sure that site's not limited because of it.
But isn't that exactly what we're saying, that it is going to limit it by saying that?
No, if they can, if they can still go thirty-five, thirty-five feet, and, I guess I'm saying, part of the site having basically a ten-foot building on it, avoiding that, or a fifteen-foot building.
Okay, understood.
Are you open to the thirty-foot setback on the east site?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that not, every, that the height, I think what both of, what everyone's saying kind of coalesces.
Sure.
Once you set that setback. And then I'd be totally open to a, like, a five-foot setback on the other two PLs. Does that sound fair? And so, I had said parking would be the same, and no one kind of jumped on me, so I'm gonna assume that's okay. So, open space per unit and lot coverage. And zero FAR, obviously, because I don't think anyone has commercial in mind here.
Right.
I think this one, in my mind, is almost more like the Oceana High School site, where we had the bigger, we had like, the four hundred square foot of open space per unit. And I think we had, here. That was only forty percent lot coverage. Feel like we could do fifty percent lot coverage here?
At fifty percent lot coverage, are we still in the eighty-unit range?
I think height becomes a factor.
Exactly. I'm like, okay, something's gotta give here.
And I think, kind of the point you mentioned earlier, Christian, is like, the next slide, we're gonna be talking about eight oh one.
Right.
And if we go up in height on that one, this part, depending on what height limitations we add in here, it could be sandwiched where they have a view out the back of the hillside behind them, and the backyards of those homes up there, and then in front of them, they're looking at the back of a building. So, it, it's, I think, taking that into consideration, the height is gonna be the sticking point whether we can get eighty units out of this parcel or not.
I'm trying to envision, I'm like, looking at this image, and I'm envisioning, trying to envision the slope from the pavilion up, and going, okay, if we do thirty-five feet at the, I know we're not talking about eight oh one right now, but if we do thirty-five feet at eight oh one, and, I see what you're saying here, this becomes, becomes a little bit more of a challenge.
I feel like I'd be amenable to the higher height at eight oh one that we have on the adjacent front, like, the, I mean, if you look at this, you could do a really tall building at the base of the property line, if we're setting it at the finish grade of the adjacent property. And so, if you just extrapolated that to the flat part of Pavilion of Flowers, I think you're getting a much higher building.
It would look strange if they weren't congruent, considering this, I mean, it's just not that huge of an area.
I mean, I would have, so, what I'm tending towards is a much lower lot coverage on the one with all the trees, with the hope that they somehow save a lot of the trees, and then a much higher lot coverage on the asphalt parking lot.
I think we get that no matter what, just because of the way eight oh one is currently.
So, are you, are you good with the four hundred square feet of open space for seven fifty-one? Vice Chair?
Yeah, my, my feeling is, we probably planned too many units on this seven fifty-one Oceana, I'd rather reduce the number of units, and, and keep the, the open space and the lot coverage.
I mean, I think Pavilion of Flowers was an add, right? So, you could maybe put some of the density on that one. I don't know. I feel like I'm hearing everyone likes the...
That would make more sense to me, to be honest.
Okay, so, I'm gonna say lot coverage fifty percent, open space four hundred per, per unit. And call it a day, I feel like that covers everything. Yeah? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so, next one.
And the next site is Pavilion of Flowers, eight oh one Oceana Boulevard, site H. Proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre, the total parcel size is one point one nine acres, and the total units is forty-two.
Okay. So, I think we're at four to five stories on this one, with a lot coverage of, let's say, seventy.
That's looking practical.
Yeah. And then on this one, maybe the open space goes to the two hundred, similar to the Caltrans site, where it's up to fifty can be private. Same parking standards, I'm thinking zero FAR on this, I think this just goes to Rothy. Yeah? And that just leaves setbacks, which I feel like...
There's a small setback south.
Is there? I think that's just a wall, but I would be amenable to a small setback here.
A wall?
I don't know.
There's a street or a drive.
We could match the setbacks north of Malagra, because it's still Oceana Boulevard. So, we had, for the Manor and Oceana Boulevard setbacks, we had five to ten-foot setbacks on all public streets, so I think maybe we do ten feet here?
Yeah, ten.
Okay. So, ten-foot front setback. And then, like, fi, again, the five feet for the other three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
That sounds good.
Yeah. Any other comments, speak now or forever hold your peace? Okay, next.
Next site is US Bank at one six five five Oceana Boulevard, it's site number thirty-three. The proposed density after rezoning is fifty dwelling units per acre, the total parcel size is point three five acres, total number of units is fourteen.
I feel like this is another good place for height, for the four or five stories. We could have that same, because it's still Oceana, that same ten-foot front setback, and because it's just parking lot around it, we could do the same five-foot, 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 and I think we could make this one all residential. It's a really small parcel.
Yep.
Okay.
Chair Hauser, what was the setback along Oceana?
Ten feet for both site H and the site, and then five feet for the other.
So, the total, I apologize, go ahead.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner Devine.
So, the total units for this site is fourteen. And I'm looking across the street at like, probably mostly single-story and a couple two-story houses, thinking maybe not beyond four stories, that would be really, really, really stark. And I, and it, it's unfortunate, because it is a good corner site for something like that, but considering that's the only residential area in the totality of this site, I just, it just seems like it'd be quite jarring, but that's just an opinion.
What I like about, yeah, what I like about this one, though, is east of this is a big ridge with two- to three-story apartment buildings up on top, so, when, what I would say is, those sightlines from those homes, when they look north towards this direction, they're already seeing homes up on, on hills, and so, I, I'm a bit more open to that, given that that's the case. Now, if it was just single-family homes and flatland north and east of this, I may have a different opinion, but that, that's kind of how I view this site, where there's just, it's just hillside up there behind the building in the northeast corner here, and there's apartments already up on there.
I mean, I mean, I, I kind of agree with what Vice Chair said, and I'm also measuring in Google Earth, and it looks like the closest building, which is that out building across the way that's like, long and gray, is like, ninety to ninety-five feet away. So, I think if you have like, a fifty-five or sixty-foot building, it won't feel like, I think there's so much with like, the road, and then the head-end parking, and then the setback from the fences, and the setback from the fence line, I actually think it's probably okay. But I'm, I'm amenable to go to either.
And Chair, I did want to note, this site is within the Sharp Park specific plan, and the portion of the planning area that the plan is in effect. So, this was considered as part of the overall Eureka Square Shopping Center and that planning process, a high-density mixed-use configuration, you know, to make it residential only would be carving out of that mixed-use intent, so that would be a deviation, we'd have to amend the Sharp Park specific plan eventually in order to do that. I'm trying to find the specific heights that were contemplated, you know, during that process.
Fifty-five from Eureka Square?
Relatively high, yeah, certainly more than thirty-five feet.
So, then with that said, how do, how does everyone feel about having this as multi-use?
I, I'm more comfortable with what we did with the Sharp Park plan, where it was a mixed-use fifty-five-foot building, and that seemed to fit into this Eureka Square environment. I'm not excited about this being a residential site by itself, being so small and being in the middle of a mixed-use commercial shopping center. So, I think we did better initially than what we're doing now, in my opinion.
I'm just looking at the title software, and they look like they're owned by different people.
Yeah.
Like, it's not technically part of the, I know it was in the Sharp Park specific plan, but it's not currently the same owner. I don't know, I'm amenable to all residential here.
In the specific plan for Eureka Square, the height was forty-five-foot base height, additional five feet for every point zero seven five floor area ratio increase in commercial uses, up to a maximum of fifty-five feet, interpolated to the nearest hundredth. So, there was a range of forty-five to fifty-five, in that planning context, greater height was tied to greater commercial, we were trying to find incentives to provide more commercial area. So, with or without commercial use, you know, greater heights were considered in that site.
The more I'm thinking about this, the more I'm coming to your point of view. I think that's, I would follow that.
Basically, leave it as is, as it's in the specific plan.
Just prescribe some setbacks that weren't really programmed in at that level.
Well, I think you can have zero setbacks on the parking lot sides, but the setback would be for Manor, I'm sorry, for Oceana, wasn't that defined in the Sharp Park specific plan?
I would have to spend a little more time looking, I don't, I don't recall offhand. I did hear the commissioner, commission earlier, though, say, five feet on the sides, so are we down to zero on the parking lot sides and ten feet on Oceana?
I'd be okay with that, especially because it's all just parking around it.
Yeah. So, I'm getting rid of the four to five stories, and I'm just writing, comport to specific plan, except those setbacks. Any other?
No.
Okay. How many has that been? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I think that's seven.
Seven.
So two more, and then we'll reopen for public comment, and then we'll take a recess.
And just to clarify, back to Site twenty, it looks like there was an error in the underlying draft housing element in terms of the calculations based on site area and density. So I think we can certainly have a constructive conversation. You know, it's going to be in that range of units, maybe a little bit less, probably not a little bit more. So we can go back to that, or we can group that with the sites that we'll have to pick up next time that are not being considered tonight. There are two sites that we could not include due to potential conflicts of interest.
Okay, so let's go back to twenty, and then we'll, or let's do one more, whatever's after this, we'll come back to twenty, and then we'll take public comment. Okay.
The next site is Latter Day Saints at 7:30 Sharp Park Road. Site A, the proposed density after rezoning is thirty dwelling units per acre. The area assumed for housing is point nine acres. It's shown in the dark blue polygon. And the total number of units is twenty-two. And also, something unique about this site is in the hillside preservation, preservation district. So keeping that in mind when you're looking at proposed heights and the lot coverage for this site.
The asphalt parking lot is in the HPD, but the one on Oceana is not?
Yeah, that's the unique about this parcel.
I mean, I, for one, look at this, and I think it's a really underutil... I mean, I would have, I would add more surface parking lot to the poly, to the sub-area. Are we able to do that?
Potentially. You know, the more that we increase, the more we'd have to check how it aligns with the environmental review that's being pulled together for the rezoning, based on these assumptions.
Why wouldn't we want to include the whole site in case the property or wanted to take advantage of like the new state laws, where religious organizations can just sell their land for...
Well, it's up to the Planning Commission's discretion, you know, how much of the site to recommend. I'll just add that we've assumed this amount for purposes of beginning the environmental review, but, you know, could we still change it at this point in time? I'd have to check with our consultants. So if there's an interest, and, you know, it's contingent on not derailing the environmental review process, we can consider if more units could be appropriate. The caveat to that is that we do need to assume, you know, a reasonable amount of housing development and determine the site's feasible. I have no reason to believe this entire site is prime for redevelopment. You know, the church is in an overall good condition, there's no indication they're looking to get out of the religious business, so to speak. So, you know, while there may be some viability to the state law, some people call it gigby, yes in God's backyard, to my knowledge, it's not in effect yet, and we don't know what the impact would be here in Pacifica. So this, at minimum, is a conservative estimation for what could be achieved on the site.
Does anyone want to start us off?
Is anyone else seeing height as an issue here because of all of these single-family homes? Okay. Just wanted to know if I was being sensitive to that, but I also, I'm not seeing a slope here in this particular area, this lot, the church's lot, in comparison to the single-family homes. Am I right in that assumption?
I believe you're correct.
Okay. So I would say, no higher than thirty-five feet here, personally?
I'd agree with that.
I think I agree with that, but I'm trying to find on Google Earth. Yeah, I think that the density that staff has this is thirty dwelling units per acre. I think that makes sense as well. I might configure this lot in a different way, so that it makes use of the row of parallel, or the row of head-in parking stalls that go north-south. And then maybe reduce some of the polyline adjacent to the single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
So the access to this site would be through the church parking lot? Is that the...
Yeah, if the church, so the church would be the one selling the land, so they'd have to grant an easement to...
Okay, that's, that's the assumption.
Yeah. I think if they're open to selling their land for housing, then they would be willing to provide an aggressive easement.
One other idea, right? I mean, the church building is rather prominent to maybe come up with a two-tier height option, where maybe the interior half of the site could be forty-five feet, and the exterior, you know, even maybe down to twenty-five feet or thirty-five feet, to provide some greater density and flexibility, where it's not going to be directly impacting, you know, the single-family residences. More than likely, they wouldn't see the bigger buildings, at least the immediate row of houses there closest, if there was that sort of two-tiered height option.
Is it true that religious institutions typically have a higher likelihood of providing lower levels of affordability, like deeper levels of affordability?
I don't know if that's a general rule. I'll say that you do often see lower-income or supportive housing-type uses as part of the mission of a lot of religious organizations. There may be just as many that sell land and profit from a market-rate transaction that aren't immediately obvious as associated with a prior church, you know, ownership. I can't say for sure. But in town, for example, at Good Shepherd Catholic Church, there's a, you know, supportive lower-income housing development there, as an example, locally.
I would be amenable to going to forty-five foot or to the four-story on, like, not adjacent to single-family homes. And then having the single-family homes be thirty, like, adjacent to single-family would be the thirty-five foot with, you know, like, a very big setback. I don't know about very big. I'm going to look at what we did for Lindemar Shopping Center for those single-family homes. But maybe we... Yeah, thirty-foot setback to the adjacent single-family homes. And three-story adjacent to that, and then up to four-story as you go closer. Does that make sense for everyone?
So I'm looking at the eastern blue line, the ninety-two feet. And if we do, you're talking about thirty feet there?
Well, so, I mean, a couple of things. I was hoping that that ninety-two feet could move leftward to where the one hundred ninety-eight label is.
Mm-hmm.
And then instead of backing into all of that, you know, two-story residential behind, it could go up and take the asphalt parking lot up.
Mm-hmm.
So that it would be a more rectilinear and more efficient area anyway. And then, I'd say, a thirty-foot setback on the west side and south side. And then beyond that thirty-foot setback, the first homes have to be, like, the adjacent buildings have to be thirty-five feet, and then they could go up to forty-five feet.
Okay, yeah.
And then, you know, five, the five-foot setback for the other property line.
For the interior.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're envisioning like two rows of townhouses?
I'm not sure what I'm envisioning.
Okay.
I'm...
I'm trying to follow, you said...
Yeah, I'm envisioning that the parking, the depth of each parking space, which is about twenty feet, and then another ten feet, is empty. There's no building in there. And then a three-story element, whether that means it's three-story garden apartments or three-story townhomes, or whatever. And I don't want to prescribe like a building type, but I think that will create kind of some natural... I think it would be consistent with what we talked about for the last stuff in June.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow your logic, seeing I could understand what you were describing in a more detail.
I think being in a single-family home or a condo that's two stories adjacent to a five-story building is probably...
Less desirable.
Yeah, there's no, there's really no street, like there was on the last Oceana site. So that's where that thirty-foot setback is kind of coming from. Does that feel good?
Yeah.
That strip of land is what, ninety-two, almost ninety-three feet wide? So with a thirty-foot setback, you're talking maybe one row of housing.
But we're, but we're moving, we're going to look at moving the blue line, so that it goes like that. So this is going to be like, more of a rectangle.
I like that, because you'll have less, less of the housing adjacent to residential, because you're making use of that upper-left corner. And then also, you offer, I would, I would say, higher-quality housing, because then you open up those views in that upper-left corner as well, which I would assume probably get over that, around or over that water tank, and be able to offer ocean views from up there as well.
Yeah.
And then you'll have to, the thirty-foot setback is really just against adjacent residential properties. So if we shift that line to the one in one ninety-eight point eighty-seven, roughly around there, right, it's only going to be adjacent to what I see at most five residential properties.
Yeah.
Or actually, that one looks like it's two units, so let's call it seven.
I think that, and then the same, using the same parking that we've been talking about. I think this is one where we...
There's plenty of parking.
Redo the Site twenty-five, the skyline Caltrans open space. And, I don't know, maybe seventy percent lot coverage on this one? Does that feel good? Okay. Any other questions on this one? Okay, back to twenty.
So, there's a little bit more context here as well. So we have a parcel that's just over three-quarters of an acre. The city is in discussions with the Pacifica School District, is for a potential property swap, or some sort of public-public joint venture for utilization of this site, as well as some other school district-owned property. So I would encourage the commission to think about this in a mixed-use context, most likely ground-floor office-type mixed use in some fashion, for potentially school district offices, and then figuring out how a housing project might be able to take shape, you know, above or around that on the site.
Christian, just to clarify, the three parcels here, those are all City of Pacifica-owned?
Correct.
Okay. And in terms of the numbers, the parcel size is accurate for the three parcels?
Yeah, I believe that parcel size to be accurate.
Okay.
I think the calculation of the assigned density didn't yield the right number of units, so I'm not sure. I'd have to double-check our assumed density. Or is it that, or is it just a bad calculation off of?
Okay.
Density?
Got it.
I mean, I think on this one, we would want to do the same ten-foot off of Oceana. And probably ten-foot off of Malagra setback. And this one, probably four stories. But maybe three stories on one oh four?
Yeah, I think you'll, if we could do that, I think that would be very considerate.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Godwin, any? I'm going to assume that if no one is like raising their hand, that they're just happy with the proposal.
I missed the last part. I heard, ten feet off of Oceana and Malagra, four stories, and then I missed the next.
Three stories at one oh four.
Okay.
What about setbacks on Avalon at one oh four? Ten?
Yeah, well, so, so I think... I don't know, ten feet, that's, single-family homes also really close to their lot line.
Mm-hmm. Well, if we're going to, if we're going to keep limited to three, then I'm okay with a very small setback. If we have a higher height, then we should probably expand the setback.
I probably wouldn't go less than fifteen, which I think is what we did in the Sharp Park specific plan. I don't know. How wide is that lot?
One sixteen and one twenty are pretty close.
How wide is one oh four? I don't want to kill this space, though. I agree.
Right, one sixteen and one twenty are pretty close. I also don't want to apply standards to just the parcels we're looking at today that aren't unreasonable for the neighborhood. If houses are on top of each other, then that's character of the neighborhood. So I'm okay with a small one that...
So, one oh four is about sixty-eight feet wide.
Okay, I'm okay with the ten-foot setback by one sixteen.
Yeah.
And maybe it goes to five when you get to the church and the fire station?
Yeah, I think ten. I'm just looking between the houses right now, it's about, it's like ten.
And then, we said four stories, except three next to a single-family home. I'm okay with the pretty, I mean, this is like a fully paved site with no trees. Like, I'm okay with a higher lot coverage and less open space here, and the same parking amount.
I agree.
So maybe we do the Site twenty-five open space again? Site twenty-five is the first one that we looked at, that Caltrans long strip. So the Site twenty-five open space, and like, I want to say, like a seventy percent lot coverage?
Sure.
Christian, do you feel like that will allow the project that you're envisioning?
So I'm looking back at the Site twenty-five open space. My notes show two hundred square feet usable open space per unit, with a minimum twenty-five percent private and up to fifty percent can be private?
With a six-foot minimum dimension for private, yeah.
That's a general standard we're trying to apply, right, for private open space, just a six-foot minimum dimension?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we use the Site twenty-five for Site A as well, which we just looked at. So I feel like that answered all the six criteria for this lot. Any other comments on the courtyard before we move on?
No.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to reopen public comment. I don't know if anyone is on the phone or on Zoom.
Chair, it looks like we have one raised hand.
Okay. And a reminder to, is it star nine, to raise your hand if you're dialed in? Okay. Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Raimi Tan, architect over at Pacific Manor. I just wanted to, you know, comment about the parking. A lot of times now in the mixed-use scenario, you know, we're doing shared parking to reduce the parking count. You know, of course, it depends on, you know, what kind of businesses are. You know, if it's typically like a daytime business, that's easily shared with residential, when people, you know, come home at night, and then they're out during the day, you know, when they're working. Restaurants is a little bit more challenging, which, you know, you have that evening, evening rush, which is the same time people come home. So, you know, just, it depends on that. So this, you know, something to keep in mind. And then I noticed that there was some of the setback, as well as the open space, private open... Uh, private open space standards seem to vary between the, the sites and. You know, typically what I've seen, you know, with, with different cities is, is there's a set standard. In the, you know, the open space, so it's less confusing for developers. It's just, you got multiple standards, it becomes a little bit more confusing. So just. You know, urge the commission to kind of keep that in mind. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other raised hands?
Chair, there are no other raised hands at this time.
Okay, so I will reclose public comment and with that it is ten eleven. We will come back in five or ten minutes? We'll come back in ten minutes at ten twenty one.
Beginning of the meeting, so the good news is there are fewer than anticipated that remain.
We're being very efficient. Okay, so, um, let's move on to the next four and let's have a goal to kind of finish this by eleven.
I think we can do that on the staff side.
Awesome. What are you saying, Greg? I was kidding.
Uh. Next site is Caltrans right of way, um, Coast Highway Quarry. Site number twenty six, proposed density after rezoning is sixty dwelling unit, dwelling, dwelling units per acre. Total parcel size is two point five acres and total number of units is hundred and twenty two.
So similar to the Caltrans right of way that we started with, can staff please provide us with a dimension? Of the width of the site?
So something along the lines of one hundred sixty feet towards the southern end and. A hundred eighty to a hundred ninety feet at the northern end.
Can I ask one quick question here? Does this site stop north of the access road for the quarry project? Does, that would be added? It looks like it does, but.
It, it does.
Okay, thanks.
And to be clear, it's not shown on this slide, but the Caltrans right of way actually jogs back towards highway one. So when you get to the point of the quarry access road, it's private property at that point. With a small shoulder from the sort of built portion of highway one.
And something else I'd like to add is this property is also located in the hillside preservation district as well.
It also looks like it, there's a pretty, depending on where you are, there's a pretty significant berm. So no matter how high we make it, it's gonna feel taller. So why, why did we choose a site that's in the HPD?
So, uh, first off, we have a lot of housing units to plan for and we need to maximize areas where they, they could reasonably be constructed. I think the other part to my answer is that the hillside preservation district in and of itself, as I've stated many times before, doesn't. Regulate density or use, uh, doesn't seek to limit the types of development that occur, that can occur. It strives to preserve the sloped areas and so in fact it encourages less coverage but greater heights. In that trade off for protecting, um, the sloped areas.
Is this a coastal commission zone?
Uh, so this site is in the coastal zone. And arguably would still be within the coastal commission's permitting jurisdiction at this point in time. I don't wanna confirm that point on the record, but, um, the quarry overall is the private property component of that, uh, at the, at minimum.
So I thought hillside preservation was one per five acre. Isn't that, wasn't it something, okay?
No, so the hillside preservation district in and of itself doesn't establish density or land use. What it does is establish a formula for.
For slope.
Slope that determines how much land area you can cover and disturb.
Okay.
With the development.
So we're looking at access of this, okay. If I wanna just clarify this, that we were, in the last study session, we were looking at this, the site across the street, correct? We were talking about access?
Yes, the Valley Mar Station site.
Right, we were talking about the really, really big issues with access. And how that really could only occur at that main intersection. Which again, we're looking at that entry into the quarry north lot, I suppose, and the school district on the other side of the highway. So I'm trying to envision the access to this. Parcel.
Well, from the north side, there's a stoplight at that, at that point. So there's a, it should be pretty safe this way. If you access the parcel from the north perimeter.
But a lot of people go in that parking lot and make U-turn to be able to go to the school. That parking lot's jammed in the mornings.
It, that could be prohibited and probably will have to be if you develop this site.
Right.
I mean, you probably have to require that no entry on that site from. You know, at least one dimension, I mean, one direction or probably two. So we'd probably need cooperation from. Multiple groups to make this work.
And I think, yeah. Also timed little lights and a few other things, right? Which help impact.
There was talk of digging a tunnel under there at one point too, and then for pedestrian access, there's been a couple ideas. Of how to make that more usable. Don't know any of them have ever worked out.
I, I mean, I kind of concur with Commissioner Devine on this and I also think because it's in the coastal zone. And I would ask that staff maybe bring back the information on this. But because it's in a coastal zone, it doesn't follow, it doesn't fall into the same like, oh my goodness, we have to. Determine the envelope now because we lose discretion. Because it's still in the coastal zone, I would assume that the coastal commission would have some level of discretion. And so I almost wanna say on this one, we should see what the sequoia study looks like. And then kind of. I don't know.
This site really reminds me of the first site we looked at. It had one access point at the north, hickey.
It does, but skyline does not have the same traffic issues as highway one. And like this particular intersection, I feel like is one of the worst intersections in the city.
Yeah, actually took the others, I know, I know it may not have been in an official capacity, but we became so frustrated with the site across the street. And how impractical it was, we completely tabled it. And I'm looking at this and going, how is this better? How does this work in this specific area next to this specific intersection? And I'm completely open to, to being enlightened.
Well, I, I think it's like, it's helpful that we have all these like replacement sites that we're studying in the EIR. Because of all the sites that we've talked about, a lot of them have been difficult, but only Valley Mar Station and this one seemed to be like, oh my gosh, like. I kind of don't wanna, I kind of wanna put in the same bucket. I don't know. I think we continue to study it in the EIR and get a. A definitive answer on coastal commissions purview and then maybe.
Well, I think part of the challenge is that, um, for the sequel study, we need to have some sense of what the project is. We can't back into it using the sequel process. Uh, and so we would, you know, in that sense, maybe need to assume a maximalist project here. To determine what the maximum potential environmental impact would be. And then consider scaling back from that point. But I don't know that we can defer decisions on that now because we do need to get underway with the environmental review. Based on the assumptions that would be in this phase one rezoning.
But isn't that assumption, Director Murdock, the hundred and twenty two units or the sixty dwelling units per acre? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
It is, but in terms of like height, uh, lot coverage, et cetera. So, you know, if there was some resource that would be impacted on a small portion of the southern end of the site. That wouldn't be developed, maybe that's not an impact, but if the site was ninety percent lot coverage, for example. Potentially it would, so it's sort of simplistic example, but having some sense of what's, what the development would be is necessary to do the, the sequel review.
I'm leaning towards using similar. Numbers to what we did on the first one.
You wanna put four to five stories here?
I'm highly, highly, highly against that. That's crazy.
Well, per what, um, Christian just said, it's if we wanna look at the study, then you'd go the maximum use. And that's what that would be. Now, if we don't wanna do that, then that's fine, but that's what, what was I was going after. Using the, using our, using our. Our, what we've been talking about for other projects, eliminating sightlines of private properties. Not blocking views, it's, it's straight hills on the eastern side. So we don't have those considerations here. And going up, this is actually a good lot for it now. Regardless of the views of what's west of this property. That's, I think, I think some of the standards we applied to other parcels. I'm trying to think how they, how they align to this one as well.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Leo. If we're gonna be consistent, we should build something tall here that's. You know, I know it would be somewhat jarring to the. Community to do that, but I think. That's what's most logical.
And to be clear, we're not building anything tonight. We're, this is still public. I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Saying we should zone it such that that kind of project is a possibility is all.
Yeah, maybe enough, a, a couple other points of reference for the commission, you know, as mentioned, the HPD. You know, I think I'll leave it to you to conclude whether this is a prominent hillside, but for whatever reason, the HPD overlay applies to the site. And so, you know, among its purposes is to minimize disturbance even at the expense of greater height. So that's a trade off that is already included in the HPD overlay. Uh, the other factor is to the extent that we've heard public input and believe there may be tribal cultural resources, for example. Minimizing the horizontal impact to the site. Could provide the offsetting benefit of minimizing potential impacts to those resources, particularly if we could do some on the ground study. You know, at, at the project level, uh, were it to occur, to figure out, hey, we think the fewest resources or no resources are here. Let's use this as the footprint and sort of build up. So there's a couple factors that come into mind for me. I think maybe a third factor is, you know, a taller building located perhaps on the northernmost portion of the site. Might sort of lend itself to the most logical circulation pattern. Concentrated around the existing signalized intersection and perhaps avoid some of the, the concerns that Commissioner Devine, um, outlined about. You know, inbound and outbound circulation factors. So those are three things that I, I have on my mind as I were, if I were to, to be thinking about how to plan for, for the site.
Would, would everybody be willing to do what we did on Valley Mar and come back to this one at the end? Because it is the, I feel like there's kind of a pretty good divide on the commission between the thoughts here and I wanna. I wanna be expeditious on the other three and come back to this one if everyone's amenable to it.
I would definitely like the other two commissioners to have comment on this site.
So let's, let's go, let's see if we come, let's come back to this one at the end and see how we wanna proceed.
The next site is Builders Exchange at five two zero San Pedro Avenue. It's site number thirty. Proposed density after rezoning is thirty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size is zero point nine six acres and the total number of units is twenty three.
This one to me seems like a pretty easy. There's mixed use right across the street, correct? Thirty five feet. There's Orange Theory on the bottom and, um, the brewery and whatnot. And I don't know if there's townhouses above, I can't.
Those are apartments, right, yeah.
I think they are. It'd be great to just sort of marry the, you know, try to, to go with similar development standards. And that tree line along the back is nice too. I feel like four stories would be appropriate here, except next to the single family homes. We would do the same kind of thing that we have done.
Those are, um, I believe those, that's a motel.
The five hundred block?
Oh, five hundred, yeah.
It's a motel?
Yeah, five ten's a single family residence, but five hundred is a single story detached, uh, motel rooms.
Oh.
Yeah, so commercial, commercial use.
I mean, I'm amenable to going four stories here. I like the idea of having bigger setbacks. Along San Pedro or along the tree line? Uh, both. I would say we comport to the setback at five sixty, which I believe is the Ace Hardware. So we just line up to that, whatever that setback is. It looks like twenty. And then. Having. Like a typical backyard setback, which I think in Pacifica is twenty feet to stay out of the tree line. And then I could see seventy percent. Coverage.
Would this be another mixed use situation?
I like the idea of not disallowing it. Especially if we're going four stories for a thirty dwelling unit per acre product.
Okay.
So there's no min, max FAR, but mixed use allowed.
There seems to be a lot of interest in this area of town when it comes to restaurants and dining and whatnot.
Yeah.
And just commercial uses, cause I don't think the commercial places here don't last long. When one goes out and there's a new business coming in.
Right.
Pretty high or low vacancy, high occupancy.
So this would then I assume be the same parking as Ramala Plaza, which was the commercial from the SP, SP. And the same residential. Yeah? What do we want the side setbacks to be? So five feet?
Yeah.
I feel like that answered all of those. Oh, open space per dwelling unit. I feel like the same as number twenty five. Which is like the two hundred fifty percent, twenty five percent? Okay. Okay, it's, do you want me to reread that?
Uh, I think I captured it. I just wanted to circle back on Commissioner Devine's height input. Um, I think she had been inclined for a lower height limit and then heard a couple commissioners, I think, talk about a higher height limit. So just wanted to confirm the commission's consensus on that.
Did we talk about three along five hundred and then going up to four? Are we talking about four all the way?
I think that's what I had proposed when I thought they were homes, but when it was a motel.
Okay. If we do four all across, I would propose maybe a ten foot setback on the five hundred. Because what those really are is they're not hotel rooms, they're elevated bungalows. And they're like considered higher end luxury stays.
Do we wanna do a three, a three story adjacent to the, no?
I'd rather do ten foot setback.
I think that's more appropriate, like just give them a little more space and a little like maybe opportunity for some landscaping to create, you know? Create a buffer there. I know that sounds sort of silly, but.
No, it doesn't.
If you drive by it, you'll see what I'm saying and you'll go, you, you know.
They're, they're nice places.
Yeah, they are.
I think that's a very. Fair.
So four story.
So four stories, uh, ten foot setback to the west.
Correct, and five foot to the east, twenty foot to the front and back.
That looks good.
Okay, next. Oh, well, that's easy. Just keep going.
The next site is Ace Hardware at five sixty San Pedro Avenue. It includes both the orange and blue parcel. It's site number thirty-one. Proposed density after rezoning is thirty dwelling units per acre. The total parcel size is one point two four acres and the total units is thirty.
I mean, I, I would literally be amenable to doing the same thing and then reestablishing the setbacks for the east and west.
And we're talking more mixed use, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Not required, but permitted.
Okay. Who owns, is this privately owned property right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And the, the eastern setback on higher one would be?
That's, so that's the thing we need to talk about is what the west setback is, which I think we do five feet there too. So you'd have like ten foot between buildings on the site. And on the, I don't know, what do you think on the east?
Just in front of that's the parking area for the access trail and that kind of stuff. I think there's a pump house or something.
There is some parking there, yep. Where those cars are and then north of those pump house.
Concern about that?
Well, I think because the setback is matching the building that's already there now, I think it's going to be, I'm going to say call it more of the same.
Okay. Uh, there was talk at one point of putting a one of the, um,
Permit, OSV.
OSV vehicles there and I don't know whether that was ever resolved or?
I think that was north of where the cars are shown on.
Okay. I don't know whether there'd be any access issues with that or anything.
I believe the discussion there was it would be a pull through site where they would enter and through the driveway for the parking and they would pull through past the pump house, if I remember correctly. Because the navigating that parking lot, I think that's where we settled, but I, maybe we can ask later what the status is of, of that one. Because that one was in the coastal, coastal commission jurisdiction or coastal zone.
Yeah, I didn't, didn't know how it finally came out. That was one answer we proposed, but I don't know whether it's the final answer or not.
Yeah, I don't remember if that one had a, a pull through design offhand, but I believe there were two spaces. That permit has been appealed to the coastal commission and it's still pending action by the coastal commission.
Well, I, I just wanted to mention it when we discussed the site, see if it was impactful or not. It sounds like it's not, so.
I like the idea of a ten foot or even fifteen foot east setback if it's, there's a trail there so that it feels public.
Yeah.
We were doing twenty feet against thirty-five, right?
Twenty feet against thirty?
On the other parcels, on highway thirty-five, we were doing about twenty feet. Should we? What do you think about that for this one?
I mean, so on highway thirty-five, on skyline, we were doing a thirty, we did a thirty foot. It was thirty to forty feet to be consistent with what was further south at a Sharp Park. But I feel like that's probably too big for this. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind going at twenty feet along the, so you'd have twenty foot at San Pedro, twenty feet to the east and twenty feet along the rear.
I'm like, in a perfect world, we could do thirty, but it's not going to work for this, for this particular location, I don't think. Would it be, would it be crazy to do twenty and then maybe tier it up? Maybe go three and then set, set it back to four? Or is that kind of unnecessary in this area? I'm just thinking about that trail and how often it's utilized and it's quite small. There's a lot of mountain bikers on that trail as well.
Yeah.
I'll just add, I've done some work in relation to, to planning for that future coastal trail alignment. And the way the right of way is configured there, it's very narrow and doesn't really provide much of an opportunity to create a safe and desirable trailhead. You know, I think providing or requiring a sufficient setback could protect that space for, you know, future discussions with the property owner or review during a development project to, to maybe secure some additional land, to create, create a really robust and, and quality trailhead opportunity.
So, so am I hearing thirty from everyone, it sounds like? Maybe I missed that.
I, I think just something, you know, at least twenty, for example, you know?
Maybe we settle in the middle and say twenty-five. I mean, you know, I'm trying to be reasonable here.
Okay. So so all development standards, same as site thirty, except a five foot west setback and a twenty-five foot east setback. Okay. Next one, I think this is the last one on the list and then we go back to the twenty-six. Is this the last one on the list?
Yes, this is the last one on, on the list. Um, it's Oddstead Boulevard, site F. Proposed density after rezoning is forty dwelling units per acre. The area assumed for housing is roughly zero point four eight acres as shown in the dark blue rectangle and the total number of units is sixteen.
I feel like this is another scenario where the blue line kind of makes the setbacks. So I don't think you need to have any setbacks from here.
I'd agree. So, um, the teacher housing project that's already, development project that's already moving forward is going to technically be adjacent to this?
No, that's, that's by frontierly end to the north.
Okay.
So this is just out of Park Mall. And I guess the question I have here is if there was a opportunity for an assemblage with the Park Mall site? Why, I feel like, I don't know. I mean, I feel like there's a lot more flat, empty area here.
I, I think, you know, my hope would be that this would become part of a re-envisioned Park Mall in a future development scenario. I mean, that's speculative and one can hope. All we can do right now is, I think, to plan for this site, but not do anything that would preclude it from, you know, being associated with Park Mall in the future. One of the key issues on this site is the proximity of creeks on two sides of the property and assuming the, the one hundred foot creek setback is set forth in the general plan. And so I think we tried to underprogram this site, if you will, to provide some flexibility for those ecological resources as well as planning for, for access on and through the site. So could it accommodate more units potentially? I think so, but, you know, I think the potential for biological resource constraints or, or other factors to come up at the project level, you know, we shouldn't lose sight of that either.
Did we miss Park Mall?
I'm sorry?
I don't, I'm looking through my notes and I don't think we did Park Mall.
I don't believe we have because the site doesn't require rezoning at this point. And so we haven't prioritized it for this site's discussion at this point in time.
Got it, so Park Mall is not being upzoned?
It's not proposed to be at this point in time. One question I don't have the answer to is whether we'll have time to do a similar process for sites that are not proposed for rezoning. I would love to do that if we can, but it's already a bit of a heavy lift to get through the rezoning sites and the, the time that we have available.
So this is on the existing sites with, uh, capacity for housing? That's what we're saying?
I'm sorry, which?
This is on the list of existing sites with capacity, or sites with existing capacity for housing? That's what that list is called, right?
This site that we're talking about right now?
No, 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 no.
Or Park Mall?
Park Mall is on that list.
Co- correct, existing capacity in the general plan update. It was designated mixed use neighborhood, which had up to thirty units per acre for the site.
I mean, I would say zero setbacks, but you just matched the Park Mall standards. I don't know.
I think part of the challenge is we don't yet have sort of standard mixed use neighborhood zoning. And so it would be helpful to get some sense of height, for example, that might be appropriate here.
What about things around the Sharp Park specific plan? Leveraging back here.
Yeah.
So forty-five feet, I think, would be a sort of consistent height that was considered for mixed use neighborhood in the Sharp Park specific plan. Where we got to mixed use center, which was, you know, up to fifty units per acre. We did talk in some contexts about up to fifty-five feet in height, but forty-five would, I would say generally align with a, a mixed use neighborhood designation.
Yeah, and across the street, I think that's the senior housing or there's like apartments across the street, I believe it's senior housing, which is above street level and it's three stories on top of that. So that's probably considering a street level parcel, which I believe this one is, that's probably gets to about forty-five feet. So in terms of mix, kind of blending with that neighborhood or the general area, it's not, wouldn't be entirely out of character.
Right, I think from a scale and massing standpoint, really your main consideration is, I think it's a seven twenty-five Oddstead, single family residence there, not to downplay, you know, one residence experience, but it is one housing unit as compared to many of the other sites where you had multiple proximate single family residences. So it's a, a trade off for the commission to consider in terms of height.
I mean, this is one where, and I, I think this would comport to CEQA, but this is one where I might move that hundred and three line further north and then go to three stories with like a lower lot coverage. So that it is more consistent with?
You mean greater, greater, uh, lower height, but greater lot coverage?
No, um, I would make the dark blue line, sorry, I'm tired, so this may sound nonsensical. I would make the dark blue line wider in the direction of the, like deeper. And then I would lower the density on it.
You make it more narrow?
Well, it's already pretty narrow. I would, I would keep the narrowness, the hundred and nine and hundred and three feet, but I would extend the length. So instead of the one ninety-nine, I might make it like three hundred feet. But then have three stories instead of four stories next to a single family home.
So you're just talking about extending it further?
Further back.
Further back into the hillside. If that's a possibility, I think that'd be much more attractive and conforming for this neighborhood. If that's a possibility.
I think.
And then you could still do the amount of units covered in the EIR. Like it would be the same amount of units, it would just have more open space.
Kind of that, that tree line, uh, what direction are we looking at? I guess west of the property, the western part of the property. I think that is the creek. So further you go back, you further you push it back on the parcel, I think you get closer to the creek on that back left, which was a challenge that I think you were describing, Christian, earlier.
Correct.
Because it's on two sides, it's on the rear and it's on the, the west side, I think is, I'm just going to call it the west side, the left side. Those are the two creek lines.
I don't know, I'm, I'm open. I don't necessarily think four story goes really well here. I guess it does sit lower than Park Mall. But I would, I mean, if Park Mall is thirty dwelling units an acre, I'd rather do this at thirty dwelling units an acre on a little bit more land and get to the same sixteen units and then have them be like, I don't know, a sixty lot coverage. I'm, I'm, I'm like not. You, you want to do four stories?
I'm, I'm okay with, with, um, thirty-five feet as well, three stories.
With three stories.
I feel like if I'm, it's a, it's a transition out of the residential area into the more commercial area. So I think it also would fit.
Yeah.
If they can accomplish the amount of units with thirty-five feet, then sure.
Yeah, I like the idea that we do whatever here what we're going to do in Park Mall.
Yeah.
So it's one kind of bigger area as a note, as a guideline.
So, so three stories and thirty dwelling units an acre, but still getting the same aggregate amount of units on a bigger blue poly line?
Well, I guess just, I'm hearing align with what's likely to occur at Park Mall. And I think what's likely to occur there is probably forty-five foot buildings.
Oh, that one's not three story? I don't know why I thought that was three story.
Well, we don't have the zoning. I'm just saying in the Sharp Park specific plan context, when we've talked about mixed use neighborhood, it's really talking about forty-five foot height developments. Could horizontal mixed use project occur on Park Mall? Perhaps. But I'd say generally speaking, you know, at thirty units per acre with mixed use, in my opinion anyways, we're talking about, you know, up to forty-five foot heights. So I don't know, I would suggest it's a true statement to say that thirty-five feet would align with what's likely to happen at Park Mall. I do hear and agree that this is somewhat a transitional site. So sure, maybe in its own, right, thirty-five feet is, is acceptable. I would, I would just need confirmation that we're also talking about pushing the, the boundary, you know, deeper into the site perhaps to get the same number of units, but at a lower height, for example.
I'd be okay with pushing it deeper into the site, kind of further away from the single family home if we can still hit the, uh, the setbacks from the creek. And I think that's the potentially limiting factor.
I mean, you could even skinny up, sorry.
Right, if you made it more narrow, right?
Yeah, exactly. You could increase the depth, but make it more narrow so that it's getting further from the creek. But I'm like, you know, I'm looking at like two hundred and fifty feet from the creek to the left. And I feel like that's kind of overkill. When it's the same creek that just winds around the other side of it, like I would maybe move it twenty feet further in and let somebody develop like a row of homes.
Yeah.
Or like duplexes or something like that.
So narrower and wider?
Yeah, deep, narrower and deeper.
Thirty-five feet height?
Yeah.
I think that'd be ideal on this, in this location if we could cap it there.
So less, less proximal to creek on south side. And I, I was saying sixty foot, uh, lot coverage?
Sixty percent?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The time of evening has hit me. So sixty percent lot coverage, same parking standards as we've established on all of them. I think the poly line can determine the setbacks. I like the setback you have from the, I like the zero setback on the top side and the setback that you have from the single family home makes sense. And then I think just for the open space, we can do the same thing as twenty-five or we can do more open space. But I think by creating, like making sure that the polygon is far, far enough from the creek, because you're kind of hitting the open space already. So I might just do the two hundred with the fifty twenty-five. Okay. Okay.
Any commercial on this one or no?
No. I don't think you're going to be able to get successful commercial off of, because it's not off of Oddstead, right?
Right.
The building would be behind a single family home. And I don't think anyone's going to want to. There's like a pretty great change from Park Mall, you couldn't like drive down. He's like elevator.
My sense is you'd probably want to revisit the site if a redevelopment of Park Mall seemed imminent. Or was proposed, right? And they were, you know, able to acquire this property, for example. But that's a lot of ifs. And if we're thinking about the site now, probably residential only project. Makes sense.
All right.
At the last, the last one, now we go back. Okay, twenty-six. I mean, the, the question that came up while we were doing the other ones in my mind is like, I feel like there's a view corridor here. I mean, the, the question that came up while we were doing the other ones in my mind is like, I feel like there's a view corridor here that we would impact by putting houses, like, I don't know. If we were gonna put buildings here, I definitely don't think it's a sixty dwelling unit an acre.
There's a lot of challenges with the site. Number one, yes, the intersection. It's proximally to the highway, coastal zone.
It's on top of a huge berm.
It's next to, it's also next to the wastewater treatment plant. That might not be the most desirable place to live. Especially if we put it towards the north end of the site to minimize, to meet the HPD, um, intentions of minimizing site disturbance, right? There's a lot of challenges for the site, so really what are our options? Is it, I don't know.
I mean...
It's pretty difficult to imagine driving south on Highway One and going from no developments on either side of the highway in this area. And I'm, and I understand that there's, you know, forty-three-hundred, forty-three-twenty, and the grill-a-barbecue in Valamar Station area, and seeing this massive development, I think that's, I think that's part of the public, public's perception around this plan that's just really, really, really difficult to digest. And if I'm being completely honest, it's really difficult for me to digest, too. And, um, you know, I apologize for being sort of a stickler on the Valamar sites, it's just, I just don't see this as practical, a practical building area for mostly emergency access reasons, but, um, increasing the population and the traffic and just the, you know, that's just my opinion, but I can't really foresee how this, this fits or works. That's what I'm having a hard time with.
So I have a question for staff, and I feel like it's kind of what Commissioner Devine had asked, um, at the end before we jump to the next one. But because it seems that we're pretty split, and we still have two more that need to be gone through, do we want to wait until we have more commissioners to discuss this? Is it gonna mess up the environmental process?
I don't think so. Um, we do have the necessity to get through at least the two other sites, and so we'll be having another conversation hopefully soon. So, um, I think we can package this one up. If there's any further thinking we can do, or options, or factors to consider that we can present, you know, we can bring those at that time. That might help spur some of the conversation.
Yeah.
What, what are our options though? Like, is an option on the table that this gets removed from the list?
Potentially. Um, the only challenge is it's a lot of units, and so we'd have to see what the trade-offs might be elsewhere. You know, depending on the impact to our unit count and our, our buffer, for example. But sure, I mean, this might be one that has more challenges than are worth trying to solve in this type of process at this point in time.
And, and I was in here for the prior meeting where the Valamar dis, um, site was discussed, um, so I don't have the context, but let's say, I just want to play this one through, we can't remove from the list. Where do we end up on the site, um, if we have to provide, uh, guidance as to what it looks like? I, I'm trying to figure out, if we postpone it, is it a similar conversation, or is it, do we actually have options?
Well, I think it, one benefit of postponing is that we would have some time to think about, you know, if we were to want to do this with no net loss in the document, where might those units go, for example? So that's one benefit to postponing, we can have some time to think about that. We also then have the benefit of other commissioners' input that might see the, the challenge in a different way, and provide some paths forward for the commission to consider.
And if we, if we, I guess if we can't, let's say we can't remove it from the list, and we do have to, uh, provide guidance around height and setbacks and whatnot, um, parking, and we get other comments from other commissioners, like, there's four of us here tonight, we can provide that feedback tonight. If we can't remove it from the list, so I'm just trying to, I'm under, want to understand from my fellow commissioners, like, if we can't remove it from the list, what's the feedback we want to provide? Under the assumption we're going to postpone this to a future meeting, we still need to be prepared to come back with feedback, if we cannot remove it from the list. So I guess that's kind of where I'm at right now, and I'm trying to provide that feedback, but I hope we can remove it from the list, because I, like, the five issues I just mentioned with this site, like, it's a hard site.
It looks like an ASHA. I mean, look at, I mean, that's a...
So let me be clear, you can remove it from the site, uh, from the sites list. The question is, are we able to just remove it, or do we need to add some or all of these units back someplace else? So we can absolutely remove it from the sites list. What I don't know at this point in time is what other sites we need to then revisit as a consequence, and what trade-offs you might have to accept in order to remove this site, for example.
Okay.
Hopefully that helps.
It does, yeah, and so I'm, I'm totally in favor of adding this to the list of ones we have to come back to, with those other sites with that additional information, so that we can, uh, come to an agreement.
So I promised one more, um, public comment, period. And so if everyone's amenable, I'd like to reopen. I don't know if there's anyone that have made it to eleven o'clock.
Chair, it looks like at this time there are, uh, one hand raised.
Okay. Caller, please state your name.
Hi. Hi, again, Raimi Tan, um, Pacific Manor Edgemar Architect. On the sites around San Pedro, um, that area has really gotten some really nice trendy restaurant retail, and then that new, uh, that new cottage-type hotel, and I think somebody's redoing that, that old Italian restaurant. So I'm thinking, uh, those three parcels there should really be mixed-use. Again, and with, and the mixed-use being, uh, a restaurant-bar type of retail. That seems to be, you know, what's going on in, in, in the, um, surrounding retail in that area. So, you know, it should be forty-five feet, but you need fifteen feet of that ground, though, for, for a restaurant. And then ten feet for each floor for the residential. And that, that's something, uh, you all should keep in mind, um, on any of the mixed-use, that, that you do need the fifteen on the ground. So it's either gotta be thirty-five if it's three-story, or four, forty-five, four-story, or fifty-five for a five-story. Otherwise it doesn't work out, because I've, I've done a lot of mixed-use projects, um, as an architect, and, you know, they're really hard to deal with when you got like forty feet, or fifty feet, or sixty feet, or something like that. Because numbers don't work on the floor-to-floors. And then the odd stat one, you know, I agree with, I think you gotta be a hundred feet from that creek. So what I would do is, um, you know, go from the center line, or actually the edge of the creek edge, a hundred feet back on, on the, on the, uh, left side and the back side. And then, you know, the rest of that could be developed, but, but you, you know, they, they make you keep a hundred feet. I think this is the, uh, water quality, uh, regulations. And then, yeah, that one probably makes sense, if you're gonna do all residential, you can go thirty, thirty feet, or maybe even forty if you want, you know, four stories there, and then keep the flexibility to merge it with the Park Mall there if it gets redeveloped. That quarry site, actually, I'll take back my comment earlier. It looks like that's the area where they bermed up to, to make the flyover when they were gonna connect the three-eighty into the Highway One. And that three-eighty was gonna go through where the police station is, and the, um, modular classrooms on, uh, at the back of Valamar School, and it was gonna continue up, you know, through where the golf course is, you know, on the San Bruno side. So, um, you probably can remove the berm on that parcel because it's, it's man-made. So I don't know why it's actually even in the HPD, that's weird. And then, you know, then you'd have a nice flat site, and, um, you could, you know, bring the access on, on the back side between the, the parcel and the quarry, so you don't have to take it off the, you know, the main highway. And then that site is, um, I agree, I think one of the commissioners, I don't, I couldn't see who was talking, was the, the screen was, had the, the graphics on there. But, you know, my kids went to Valamar when they were younger, and we, we always, we come from the north side, so we always made the right turn. And then, because if we waited in the left-turn side, we, most likely we're gonna be in the, the number-one lane going south, southbound, and, um, you don't want to be the last car reaching, you're gonna get rear-ended. So everybody, you know, would, you know, would, would go and turn around in there and wait, and then the, the first car, the kid would get out and push the pedestrian thing. So otherwise the light would only allow two cars to go through. You know, we, we kind of figured all, all this out as parents, you know, otherwise, you know, if you miss that light, it's a, it's a five-minute light cycle in the mornings. So that being said, that, that road probably needs to, to have a traffic circle put in. Do, you know, to, to, to increase the va, the volume of traffic, it might be, have to be, you know, a two-lane traffic circle. Yeah, so, um, so, so that, that site's, that side is a challenge, but, um, you know, that's a lot of housing units, you know, you all have to consider. You know, moving a hundred-and-twenty-two around the other side is, you know, might, might delay the, uh, the, um, what's it, EIR. Yeah, so, um, but, you know, it's a flat site, so that, you know, it's a good, good site if you can work out all the other issues. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Raimi. Thanks for sticking with us. Do we have any other comments?
No other hints at this time.
Okay. Okay, so I will, for the last time tonight, close public comment. Does anyone have any, I, I have one thought that came out of, um, public comment, but does anyone have any last thoughts or questions?
So my thought was in regards to kind of ACE and the Pedro Point sites. You know, confirming that those were, we did discuss doing the mixed-use there. But the, the commenters', uh, thoughts made me realize that as we've been having this conversation, Director Murdock, I think I want to go back to the, the, um, standard that we established at the June meeting, which is when we talk about height, we're speaking in stories. So I think there were a couple times where I heard you say like forty-five feet, but I think all of the feedback that we've given for all of the sites that we've gone through so far is based on stories. And so I want to make sure that that's what comes out of the study. And I think that then dovetails into the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight, which was in the staff report, staff included the Sharp Park specific plan standards, which included a commercial, like a minimum commercial height for mixed-use. And I wanted to make sure that in suggesting those standards, that that kind of, um, stuff carries through. So that was at the thought?
Yes, Chair Hauser. So I heard earlier in the meeting that there's a desire to sort of add on whatever of those objective standards are in the Sharp Park specific plan to sort of fill in some of the gaps, um, not covered by these six, uh, broader objective standards. And so, uh, we will try to formulate that, um, in our follow-on work. The only question I guess I have related to the, the height guidance, right, you're saying, talking in terms of stories. I feel like I did hear thirty-five feet in a lot of contexts, but then above thirty-five feet, I've heard four or five stories. And then when we get in, so that's a little bit internally inconsistent and confusing for me. Because four stories could be well above forty-five feet, and I don't know if that's acceptable to the commission. We did talk in the Sharp Park specific plan in terms of stories and in terms of forty-five, fifty, fifty-five feet, so we may need some more guidance, um, at the staff level to understand what the limits are. And then additionally, in a mixed-use context, again, multiple stories might actually result in even higher building heights if we have a fifteen-foot minimum first-floor height, and then-
Right.
Residential heights, you know, three to four stories above that, that could be, uh, forty-five to fifty-five feet or higher for a four-story building. So we just want to make sure we're carrying forward the guidance clearly from the planning commission.
Yeah, and so I think... So I know that at the last meeting in June, we were really clear that for like four and five stories, it wasn't correlated to a height. And I think you're not gonna get good commercial unless, you know, all the Sharp Park specific plan conversations that we really deliberated over. But I wholly agree that there were several times where we threw thirty-five feet out tonight instead of three stories. And so do we as a commission want to make it clear that that's three stories, or are we trying to stick? I, I don't think there were any sites where we had mixed-use and were suggesting thirty-five feet, so I think... I'm looking at you, Vice Chair.
I, I know I said thirty-five feet multiple times this evening. And I think the, my, my intention in that statement was that that's our current height limit in the city, um, and so using that. Assuming we can get, it, yeah, so that, that was my use there, that, um, the current, the current height limitations in the city seem sufficient for this development, is, was the intent of my use in that. Yeah.
So...
And most recently, we talked about it for the one on odd stat, and that was all residential.
Yeah. I think, I think if you have three stories and do thirty-five feet, it's not gonna be the same aesthetic. You, you might not achieve the same high-quality architecture that you would get if you allowed for additional height, because I think a lot of the, like, gabled roofs, when you have the lower pitches, or when you just have flat roofs, it ends up looking somewhat like an economical construction. So I know we've ta, I don't know. My preference, like, I think we should talk about it with everybody, but my preference would be to make it stories and not feet. So that we could get more of those, like, steep gable roofs that would look really pretty.
I will just caution that as an objective standard, a story doesn't provide any sort of quantitative limit on the height. And so you could have a four-story building that's sixty feet tall, and I don't know if that's consistent with the intent of the planning commission. So there may need to be some thought of sort of four stories and no greater than a particular height, if you want to be more flexible than forty-five feet, or limit that, you know, from top of plate to, you know, top of ridge, to get different types of roof designs, but not allow sort of a building mass, per se, uh, of the usable space, you know, to be greater than a, a particular height. So we maybe need to drill down a little more into that, once we sort of have this rough framework of relative heights at the different sites, and then figure out either, you know, at the next meeting, or in the course of preparing the Phase One objective standards, what it really means to translate that into specific objective standards. Sounds like we're not there yet, given a desire not to rely sort of on rote height limits, but guide mass and density and intensity by stories, while also ensuring quality architecture can be achieved. So there may be multiple ways to do that.
Well, since, since this is just suggestions for staff to study, and I think all the sites have to be brought back, maybe staff wants to, I mean, the goal is to have a height limit, right, so it's a really good point. Does staff want to make some suggestions as to what three, four, and five stories equate to, and what they equate to when you have the Sharp Park specific plan minimum commercial plate?
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly there's more study and refinement that's needed. Again, I think we have a sense of relative height and intensity of buildings, you know, for these various sites. We need to iterate on that and translate it into a story and foot height limit, uh, let's say, uh, for these, for these sites.
Okay. Any other comments on... Okay. Thank you for bearing with us. I know this has been a big process.
Thank you for the thoughtful feedback.
Yeah. Um, okay, moving on to commission communications. Does anyone, I feel like we've over-communicated already. Any communications? No?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, staff communications?
Yes, just one moment, please. Um, so, uh, in light of Commissioner Wright's absence, he was the planning commission liaison for the city council meeting on August fourteenth, where the council considered the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the North Coast County Water District headquarters project. I'll briefly report that the city council, uh, denied the appeal in part and upheld the appeal in part, ultimately approving the project. Notable changes included allowing angled parking and a third driveway on Clarendon Road, subject to obtaining all required approvals to relocate the bus stop. So that project is finally approved with those and some other modifications as directed by the city council.
Okay, thank you for the, for the update. Um, with that, can I have a mo, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's, tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, please vote. I'll suck at that. Okay, please vote. All right, we are adjourned.
That motion passes unanimously.